You got it. Thank you.
Hey.
Testing, testing. Can you guys hear me out there? All right, we're gonna be starting shortly. Stand by.
Okay, we are starting shortly. Get your church, church voice ready.
I'm expecting a lot more.
Eight, eight now. One more, eight.
Spoke too soon. Okay, forty-five seconds. Thirty seconds. Okay, here we go. Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five.
Okay, we are live. Welcome, everybody, to, uh, today's Wednesday, August twenty-third. We've got a nice crowd here, so I hope you're all comfortable and out of the heat. So, um, again, August twenty-third is the governing body of, uh, the Board of County Commissioners. I just want to make a note for you all and anybody watching, listening, if you have a, the agenda in front of you, after Item G, which is the appointments, we are going to recess and go to our fire budget. So if any of you are planning, so we will do the fire budget after Item G, and then we'll come back and pick up the, uh, the new business portion of the agenda. Okay? So with that, good morning, everybody, Commissioners. Big day today. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Beatty.
Present.
Commissioner Howe.
Present.
Chairman Meister.
Present. Next item, please.
Invocation to be led by a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the flag salute. I was not.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Next item, please.
County announcements.
County announcements. Good morning, Nicole.
Good morning, good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Nicole Gibbs of Strategic Communications. Cedric County is hosting a job fair on Thursday, August thirty-first, from one to four P.M. at the Evergy Connect Center. Job seekers will have the opportunity to meet with seven departments and connect and engage with them. Your future is here with endless opportunities. Visit our website for more information. Next, Julie Stimson from Emergency Management is here to talk about the recent full-scale exercise held in conjunction with U.S. Army North and the Seventy-Third Civil Support Team. Julie?
Morning, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Julie.
Um, I just want to share an opportunity just to kind of highlight some, um, really cool things that happened with this full-scale exercise. I appreciate you giving me a few minutes before this, particular meeting. I know everyone's got budget on the mind. Uh, we were given the opportunity to participate in the Army North, um, full-scale exercise, for the Seventy-Third Civil Support Team, which is out of Topeka. It's a joint team of Air and Army National Guard, who are specialized in chemical and weapons of mass destruction, chemical and biological warfare. Uh, the two, uh, days we actually had was twenty-five July and twenty-seven July. Uh, the unique part of this was the Cedric County Zoo actually was a choice of location for one of the exercises, where we brought in all of the assets from Topeka, including the mobile lab. Um, that ran from twenty-hundred hours to zero-six hours, so we actually were able to do an overnight exercise. The zoo staff was more than accommodating with us. Um, it was kind of unique, uh, to be able to do one, an overnight operation, and to use a zoo, um, as one of our scenarios. And then twenty-seven July, we did a Hartman Arena, um, sweep, a joint hazard assessment that is common to do before large-scale events. It doesn't want to, uh, doesn't want to go forward. There we go. Um, so there's a lot of words on here. We had set objectives, and we actually had several planning meetings, okay, several planning meetings months and ahead of this, um, exercise. And pretty much we wanted to exercise our local response capabilities and how do we work with, uh, state and federal, uh, resources. So the zoo scenario was an unknown substance in a storage container that caused a zoo worker to suffer chemical burns, and that prompted us to, uh, request the actual mobile lab to test what the actual agent was. Really, really cool. Um, we have not been able to test that, um, capability before here in person. And then like I mentioned, the Hartman Arena was a joint hazard assessment team, which is often done here for large events, concerts, uh, big festivals like the River Fest and those type of things. So we worked with the, uh, Civil Support Team quite often, but we, this was the first time we really got to do a really blown-up, full-scale exercise with their full capabilities. So some of the participating organizations was the FBI, uh, the Civil Support Team, Emergency Management, the Cedric County Sheriff, Wichita P.D. Bomb Squad, the, uh, Wichita and Cedric County Hazmat Teams, the Zoo and Hartman Arena. So we received a certificate of appreciation from Army North, but it really is a reflection of all these participating agencies that all came together, um, to participate and not only help the CST earn their recertification, but also test our local capabilities and how do we work with our state and federal entities. So this was a really good exercise, um, with a lot of participation from our county and city, um, partners. And then just kind of showing some photos of unified command. As you can imagine, a unified command structure under local, state, and federal resources can get messy, but we were able to work through that, um, and work together, uh, as a big group under the same common operating pictures, uh, which is always the goal. Anytime we can exercise that capability, the, the better we are as a community. And then, uh, capabilities, uh, the, the capabilities that the CST brings is, is absolutely phenomenal. They are able to set up an independent communications network within a very short time. They had the mobile lab where they could test things right there onsite. And then again, communicating with the incident command post from the actual scene of where the devices and things were that were, um, staged. So it was really neat to test that technology and actually see it, um, in real, in a real-life type scenario. So why do we share this? Again, this, this allows us as a community to become more prepared and resilient, again, for all hazards. We think Kansas, all we gotta do worry about is weather and tornadoes, but there's a lot more hazards that we have to plan for as a community, and we do a lot of that behind the scenes. Um, so this was a good opportunity, a realistic scenario to test and renew the certification of our, uh, partners up in Topeka, opportunity to test our local plans. Like I mentioned, we received a certificate of appreciation. Uh, the state actually sent me some kudos and said it was a great exercise participation they've ever seen, which is a reflection, again, in all of our agencies that came together to participate. Uh, strength in partnerships, understanding capabilities and gaps. We got to actually use equipment and technology as if it was a real-world scenario, and then exercising that unified command with federal, state, and local agencies. So I just wanted to share this because it was more than just emergency management. There was a lot of our partners that were engaged in this to help strengthen our community resilience, um, and the U.S. Army North is very appreciative of all the participation that we had as a community. So I will stand. Comments or questions?
Thank you, Julie. A few comments, maybe. Commissioner Dennis?
Well, thank you, Julie, for giving us feedback on that. Uh, I know, uh, the zoo staff was, uh, looking forward to it, actually. So, uh, they appreciated participating in that. Uh, but my question is about another event that, uh, happened recently that I haven't gotten any feedback on, and that was the concert out at, uh, Lake Afton. I know that I went out there. We had an awful lot of staff out there, uh, but I never got any feedback. Uh, I need to know, uh, did the county, uh, incur any expenses that weren't reimbursed, uh, what kind of, uh, of, uh, problems or issues, uh, came up, uh, out there? I've gotten zero feedback on, on that event, uh, and I, I would imagine they're gonna ask for it again next year. And before they ask for it, we need some feedback on what happened this year.
Um, ironically, this afternoon, I have a, a meeting with them, um, at four P.M. It's gonna be starting to plan for next year. Um, it, as far as a county, um, as far as I know, everyone has been reimbursed, payments have been made. Um, we really didn't have too much of activity out there. It was a much smaller crowd than we anticipated, but we did have some weather come in that we actually did have to evacuate the stage area due to lightning. Um, so we did have, um, some activity out there, but as overall, as far as the event goes, it, it was pretty much no issues. I think we had a couple's minor injuries. EMS can correct me if I'm wrong. Um, I think it was just a staff member cut themselves and there was something else. I can't remember. I think a, a lady had fallen and hurt her leg. Uh, but overall, it was uneventful as far as emergency response goes. And we did have a lot of resources out there just in case, but again, the crowd was much smaller than we anticipated. And we have our first planning meeting this afternoon for next year.
Okay, well, before we get too far along, I, I, I need feedback on that, because when I went out there, we had, uh, I don't know how many EMS, uh, we had an ambulance, uh, we had fire everywhere, uh, we had sheriff's deputies, we had all of the emergency management out there with, uh, a huge, uh, trailer that was a command post. So there was an awful lot of resources out there, and I want to make sure that, uh, Cedric County is protected and, and we're not spending a lot of money on something.
Absolutely. And those are discussions that we're gonna have is, a lot of it was based on the, uh, information we had at the time of how large the crowd could have been. Um, unfortunately, or fortunately, we had that blue-green algae, which also, which eliminated all the water activities that we were anticipating that were scheduled. Those all got canceled because of other conditions. So there was a lot of, uh, preemptive staging in anticipation of a much larger scale of activities that just didn't happen. But we are definitely considering what resources we truly need to pre-stage and which ones that, you know, we don't have to, so.
I know we had blue-green algae out there, but it was hotter than the dickens, and I, what I saw was people were disregarding that, and they were in there anyway, so.
Yep.
Uh, I, I just need to make sure that all of the different agencies, uh, are, uh, give us some feedback.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, Julie, yeah, our thanks to the zoo and thanks to Hartman Arena.
Absolutely.
And it's comforting. Thanks for these exercises. We got to see it in action during the Andover tornado.
Yes.
And it was well-coordinated, and, uh, so this is, uh, should be comforting news for, for our community.
Yep.
So thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks to your staff.
For today's county good news, I want to congratulate Chief Lannerman, Kevin Lannerman of the EMS. He recently was being, he was recently named the Kansas EMS Association Administrator of the Year. Angela Hamilton, EMS Deputy Chief, is here to share more about this award. Let's see his face.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Um, so the Kansas EMS Association is kind of a unified voice for the state, uh, in all things EMS. Each year, we host a conference, um, expo, and awards banquet. And this year, Chief Lannerman was awarded the KMS Administrator of the Year, which is the plaque that I have with me today. Um, this award is given to an individual who has made significant contribution to EMS administration on a local, state, and national level. Um, his submission was made by Colonel Shannon Reed. And, uh, just a, a quick little, um, blurb from, uh, the overall award, um, present, or submission was, "His unwavering support for his staff at the heart of his leadership style." Recognizing, recognizing the demanding nature of EMS, he has implemented various measures to ensure the well-being and professional growth of his staff from fostering open lines of communication to providing opportunities for training and development, and has created an environment and values that support the entire EMS team. Uh, Chief Lannerman still responds actively to calls, checks on crews, and takes every opportunity to promote EMS in the community. Um, last night, we were featured on KSN for, uh, Positive Connections for the recent field deliveries that we gave. Um, and so I would just like to, uh, congratulate Kevin on his, or Chief Lannerman, on his award.
Okay. Kevin?
Thank you, Angela, and thank you, Shannon, for the nomination. Um, I said, oh, and this is not an individual award. This is an award for our department and what our department has gone through, um, coming out of the pandemic and, and everything that, that we've, we've struggled with. Personnel shortages, vehicle shortages, but through it all, um, our staff have remained vigilant. They've, you know, over sixty-seven thousand times a year, they're, 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 you know, running those calls and taking care of the citizens of Cedric County, and that's what it's all about, is, is making this the best EMS organization that it can be, and that's, that's our goal, and, and that's what we're gonna continue to strive for. So, but I want to thank everybody and, and thank my staff, uh, for what they do on, on a daily basis, so.
All right, Kevin. Couple of comments. Commissioner Beatty?
Chief, hold, hold on one second. Congratulations, sir. How long have you been with Cedric County EMS?
Um, about thirty-one and a half years.
Twenty-and-a-half years.
Approximately.
Yeah, it's impressive. And what you're doing there, uh, under your leadership is impressive, too. And I think it's been well-publicized, the, uh, some of the challenges we faced in all public safety and all staffing. And what you've been able to do is bring some stability to that department, and not just bring stability with staffing, but a vision of where we're going, and, and that's terrific leadership. And this award today is, uh, symbolic of, of a greater thing that you're doing, and that is leading a department and leading it well. So, so I want you to know on behalf of, uh, District Four, uh, we're grateful for what you're doing and, and keep up the good work. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, thank you, Chairman. Can I, may I see that plaque more, more closely? Hold that up. And who provided that plaque, again?
Something like Kansas Emergency Medical Services.
Is that a government agency?
Yeah.
It must be, because it's very small. Actually, it'd be huge, right? But you deserve a big one.
There was, there was many people that, that, uh, received awards that evening.
Well, I'm very proud of you. I wanted to say that, you know, going back a few years ago, uh, our EMS was in dire straits, and we had a lot of problems, and we worked through that, and you stuck with us. You led us to a good, uh, organization once again. I'm very proud, I'm proud of our EMS organization. They do great work, and I'm not sure that we have rewarded them in what, the way they deserve it. And I, I hope we continue to, to find ways to, to show them, uh, what they deserve, uh, through our budget and things like that. But in, in the, in the meantime, the morale is turned on a dime, and I, and I look back to you especially because, uh, we went from, uh, a sick organization to one that's very healthy and thriving, and I think a fun place to work, and I think your leadership really shows, uh, in getting us on the right path. So, uh, a few years ago, um, we took, we talked a lot, and, uh, the fact that you got put in, uh, in charge of this organization, it was obviously the right choice. And I just want to say, I'm, I'm extremely proud of you, and I'm glad of the direction we're headed right now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you so much. Well, I just want to thank you. I mean, I, I don't want to reiterate everything that's already been said, but we did have, um, a lot of morale issues within EMS when I started, and having you in this position and leading through a lot of that, I mean, it's a night and day difference in what we see with EMS. And so, um, I just want to thank you for the work that you've put into it, how you really, um, invest in your team, and what you guys do is so critical to our community. I mean, what would we do without EMS? I don't, I can't even imagine. And so thank you for making sure that, um, your people are taken care of, so that in turn you can take care of our community in the way that it needs. So I don't have anything beyond that, but I just appreciate all the work that you do.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And Commissioner Dennis?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Uh, and Kevin, thanks for what you do for all of Cedric County. When people dial nine-one-one, uh, they want somebody that, uh, is qualified, that gets there quickly, and can take care of them in the worst day, and that's what you do. Uh, so it's, uh, is great that you recognize that it's your entire department, uh, that is deserving of the recognition. And, uh, we, we want to tell you from the bench that we appreciate each and every one of you. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Kevin, you had a lot of, a lot of congrats and a lot of comments. I appreciate the whole staff. You, you guys have done a nice job. And, uh, one question, when are you gonna get an extra stripe like that other guy up there?
I don't know.
Okay.
He's got a lot of little stripes.
Okay. Congratulations. All right.
Thank you.
Any other comments? I don't see any. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
That is all I have. I will stand for any questions.
Okay, any questions? Thanks again, Nicole. Nice job of updating us on various things.
You're welcome.
Okay, next item, please.
Public agenda.
Okay, everybody, Commissioners, we had eight people signed up, and there's two ways to talk to us. I'll go through the list, and you can address us now under the public comment agenda, or you can, if you wanted to wait till Item H. Item H is the public hearing regarding the, uh, the proposed, um, budget and, and the levy. So as I go through, you can say you want to speak now, or you say you want to wait until, for Item H. So the first one is Elder Josie Wright. Now? Okay, okay. Please come to the podium, and again, name and address, and you have five minutes.
All right. Good morning, everyone. I am Elder Josie Wright, as Commissioner Peter have stated. Um, I am the elect pastoral minister, founder of Program and Services of our infamous Youth Expressing Sovereignty for Christ Jesus Ministry. Our main focus is spiritual growth and economic development for all. It is August twenty-third, and my Holy Bible identifier for our church group is Romans, Chapter eight, verse one. "There is therefore now no condemnation to them which walk in Christ Jesus, who walk not after the flesh, but after the Spirit." Good morning. Guys, um, first and foremost, Mr. Shelton had emailed a checklist to ensure proper financing for our United Citizen Community Investment. So we have all the documentation, um, prepared for purchase. And let us know how we can get treasury in front of the realtors for our commercial, residential, for, I think Mr. Joseph Thomas had mentioned in the last meeting on August sixteenth, um, about commercial fleet and carrying on with Don Hatton Chevrolet. So we've got, you know, documentation and proof of relationship in that status, if we can speak to whomever necessary, so we can be a profitable, um, service into this community investment here in the state of Kansas and beyond. Um, we are awaiting confirmation from the Attorney General Office, which is the charity unit of the Attorney, Attorney General Office, for certification to perform our professional fundraiser for United Citizen Trade Program. That is where our funding is going to go toward, mind you, um, the Cedric County offender re-entry and all of those things. I have emailed to, um, Sister Russo and the Division of Finance Department, as well as, um, Mr. Kelly and necessary officials that would assist us with financing our community investment. So our United Citizen Community Investment is effective as we confirm our motion to dismiss mental services, which create a barrier to our economy. We spoke about this a couple of meetings ago, and I just wanted to kind of, you know, fly in as a dove to check and find out how we're doing in that area, because it's one thing to get up in front of a general public to speak about it, but we need confirmation, you know, from Health and Human Services that these services have been de-appreciated. We reside in a united state. The state of Kansas is no exception, and we do not need barriers that, um, de-appreciate the value of our economy. So, um, little services like Vitacorbs at the Detention Bureau level in Carignan for Sheriff Office that they have in there. I spoke about that last meeting. Mental health associations near Internal Revenue Building over there on, uh, North Woodline, and also Calm Care Mental Health, um, downtown on Main Street. You know, those three services, uh, whether they're, you know, um, organized or what have you, they're just not, they, they oppose a barrier to the economy, and we all know what it means. Me, as a missionary wellness trainer, elect, I already know what it means to relieve stress in a more vital type of liberal fashion. So in order to honor liberty and justice, we must present liberty and justice within the state of Kansas as well, which is a growing part of our country. Um, please inform us at the Health and Human Services Department about the upgrade, guys. In doing so, we believe our community investment agendas will be equitable and expedient. We are raising up missionaries, which display an interest of resilience during our cleanup process and moving forward within the next two-and-a-half years. To ensure a growing economy which embraces unity within a united state, we shred dismissed false records of backed-up sealed eighteen-twelve documents which resurface during bias and capabilities to discern co- united constitutional rights. Okay? These things are to be taken care of before our pastoral acad- academy is erect in the next two-and-a-half years, where that Sheriff Office is currently at one forty-one West Elm. So we have dreams, plans, and goals. It takes each and every one of us to do our part in our respectable places. Um, because our economy, I mean, is growing. We have these children in Carignan, not to mention adults in front of us who would love a better wage to support themselves, look good, and be liberal in our economy. So guys, I mean, I'm here. I've got all of the documentation needed for our community investment purchases, and I'd like to speak to County Clerk or whatsoever you have for us. I don't want to close out and be excluded from this year's budget plan, and we are ready. In the name of Christ Jesus, salut.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Wagner, uh, uh, on this request, I know we've had this request coming in, uh, you've done, we, we've asked to have some analysis done on the, uh, the legality of, of this. Can you comment?
Sure, and, uh, there are a number of different things mentioned during that presentation. I, I would always caution the county if, um, uh, there was mention of missionaries and a church, and, and it's not to say there aren't certain services that can be provided, but if it's a capital campaign for something along those lines, in all likelihood, that would not be con- constitutional under the U.S. and state constitutions, may violate the First Amendment of the U.S. Constitution, the Establishment Clause. And so have some overriding concerns about that. Obviously, we'd need more details, but does that answer your question, Chairman?
Okay. In a nutshell, kind of the can't cross that church and state differential, basically. Okay. All right. Any other questions, comments? Don't see any. Okay. Next person is Mel Hussey. Do you want to speak now?
Yes, I want to speak now.
Okay, sir. Good morning. Again, please state your name and address, and you have five minutes. And the clerk has the, keeps the timing if you, the clerk.
I am Mel Hussey, and I am the Chair of the Board of the Cedric County, K-State Cedric County Research and Extension. And the research and extension may be the best-kept secret in Cedric County. Our aid agents, and that does not include our Director and Community Vitality Agent, Dr. Jennifer Brantley, serve literally hundreds of people each year, and sometimes hundreds of people in a single month. So what I'd like to do is just tell you a few things about the programs that these agents do carry on. The 4H program's probably the best known. It consists of 15 clubs across Cedric County, and then, of course, 4H is the Cedric County Fair. Our ag agent serves Cedric County farmers through wheat plots, crop budget sheets, current land values, livestock, and pesticide testing. The FNEP, which is Expanded Food and Nutrition Education Programs, and SNAPED, Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Programs, ED, serve families in need through counseling for healthy and nutritious foods on a budget. This, along with SNAPED, focuses not only on nutritious meals, but provides classes on physical activity and many other healthy behaviors, and this is for persons of all ages. Now, the Nutrition, Health, and Wellness Program dovetails with the SNAPED and FNEP. It focuses on a whole array of healthy lifestyles and preventative programs. The most important two are probably diabetes and hypertension prevention. The gardening and lawn care is likely our most visible program. This includes the Master Gardeners, the garden shows, gardening guides, demo gardens, new annual plant testing, garden videos, podcasts, and in-person programs. And our agent is on Channel 12 every Friday with many tips. Our local food agent works on the food-growing side of horticulture with community gardening, growing growers, Kansas School Garden Guides, and numerous classes and events. We have an aging and Medicare program. This agent deals with all aspects of healthcare options. They have a strong focus on Medicare programs. They work with people that are already on Medicare and help to counsel the new ones to the program. Medicare, if none of you are on it yet, is a lot more complicated than it looks or seems. Our Home and Family Life Agent provides programs to help families function better. They have programs all the way from Better Brains for Babies to Discipline, Stepfamilies, Internet Safety, Budgeting, and Childcare Provisions. There's so much more that I don't have the time to detail, but I hope I have been able to show you the tremendous services that K-State Cedric County Research and Extension offers. And I'd like to reiterate that the Extension is reaching so many families with so many invaluable services. And we'd like to invite each of you to visit our building, come and meet our agents and hard-working staff. We have some new agents. We're interviewing for one even tomorrow night. And just to meet them and know who you are, and for them to know who you are, and you know who they are. And we do really appreciate the resources that Cedric County provides to us, and our needs are greater each year, as I'm sure you're aware. And we hope that you can continue to support us, and perhaps even consider increasing your support for us and the citizens of Cedric County. Thank you.
Mel, thank you, and thanks for being the chairman of this fine organization. In my five years of serving here at the Commission, we get emails or phone calls on a lot of departments, and we get a few complaints here and there, but every email I've had, which is not a whole lot, but it's always been around the Extension, it's always been very complimentary and thankful and appreciative, and I always forward those to the manager, and he shares them, I'm sure, with the management and staff. But I just, my compliment, you're a great asset, that's a great asset for our community.
Well, thank you. And that's totally because of the agents we have, and the things they're willing to do, and the hard work they put in.
All right. Couple other comments here. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. Just since you, I have, we have you here, I have a question, this I've been wondering about for a while. There's a facility over at the corner, I believe it's Hydraulic and 87th Street South. That may be off a little bit, but it's right there, and it's been, basically, it looks like it's not operating at this time, or whatever. I'm not sure exactly what's going on. It's, at least it was a K-State research facility piece. What's happening over there, if you can answer that question?
Well, Matthew McKernan would be able to answer that a lot better for you. It is a research facility, and he does have an open opportunity to visit there, I think, once a year. And I can't tell you all the details of what he does there, but Matthew would be glad to inform you.
But your organization no longer is connected to that?
Oh, yeah, we are connected to it.
You are connected. All right. Thank you.
Okay. And Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, thanks for being here today. I just had dinner the other night with Dr. Brantley, in Farm Bureau Dinner, so did get to meet some of the other staff. Appreciate that. The majority of the emails I get about your organization are positive emails, because especially during open enrollment, there's a lot of people don't understand what their benefits are and where they can go to get the best benefits and the cheapest benefits, but with the best coverage and so forth. And so every time that open enrollment opens up, I get an awful lot of emails. I always forward them to Dr. Brantley, so that she can see what the public is saying. So that's one project that you all do that benefits the seniors, and I appreciate it very much.
And there's hundreds of people that benefit from that, literally. So even ones on Medicare come back to go through it again, because they may not be comfortable going to eGov, Medicare Gov, and so that's a great resource for them. Thank you.
And our manager just turned 65 yesterday, so as a result, he's probably going to be talking to you.
We'll probably, we'll probably see him over there at the Extension then.
He's not as red as he was yesterday. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. Well, I won't put you on the spot, Tom, but that was pretty good. I just want to thank you guys for what you're doing, and not only the work that you do from the Extension Center, but I met Liz the other day, and I mean, I know that your agents go out into the community, are involved in a lot of things as well, and so I just want to thank you for the work that's going on. I agree, I don't hear a whole lot. I have not heard one complaint about the Extension Center, which I can't say. I have that experience with every department and just the way government business is, but I definitely appreciate the work that you guys do. And I actually emailed while you were talking, Lisa and Carol, to set up a time so I can come out there again. It's been a little while, and I'd love to just see kind of what's going on, and what's new, and meet any new agents. But if there's ever anything that we can do to help besides, after, even after this, please let us know, because what you do is so important to our community. Thank you, guys.
That's great. I appreciate that.
Okay. Thanks again, Mel. Appreciate you taking time to come and talk to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person signed up was Mark Wayman, or Way, Wagner, sorry. Do you want to speak now or later? Now? Again, state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good morning. Mark Wagner, and I am in the Bailey Edition, Swider Edition, 2120 East Bailey, down by the old Sears Building, which is now, of course, Cox. We've got some tax increases. I understand that, but for the last 15 years, we've had the street there, we had a pipeline go through. You guys did really great along I-35 Canal. Three or four houses down on Bailey Street, our traffic has increased, not only due to Cox, but had big potholes and things in there, and I don't mind the taxation with representation. I love that. But, you know, they've just put tar in front of my driveway. It puddles, they have mosquitoes. Now, the tar, since we've had the warm weather recently, is tracking in my driveway. I have been a resident there for 31 years. I have out-and-out owned my house now for 20 years. I would just like to see, maybe, you know, stop the mosquitoes, stop the tracking in my driveway, and see if we couldn't do some improvements, you know? There's a lot of traffic goes down that street, and again, when the pipeline came through and all their equipment, it just chipped and patched and everything, and all they did was just put tar, and the tar's going through, and again, leaving puddles and mosquitoes. Basically, from the old Sears Building, my house is located three-quarters of a block to the west, and if you go too far, you're going to fall on I-35. Again, I'm not grumping about the taxation, really. I mean, I do that, but if you do look at some of the houses in the area, it would be a consideration to come down and kind of see what's really going down in my neighborhood, and maybe help us with our improvements, you know? I'm going to be 65 in a year and retire. I'm going to be on a set budget. I love my house, I love the neighborhood. I mean, all of our neighborhoods have problems, okay? And we're working on them. But please consider it, or at least have somebody come down and look at those things. And it was Wildcat Construction coming down years prior when they put that pipeline in, those big trucks. That's why all those holes were there, and now they've just short-term patched it, and, you know, that's my biggest investment in my life, is my house. I got it paid for, and I've got asphalt tracking in my driveway, I've got a mosquito problem I have to spray. Just take a look at it, okay? That's all I ask, you know? I don't mind paying taxes, it's tough every year. They're going up, I see our increases, but don't forget about us. I mean, we're just little people, I don't make a lot of money, but take a look at it. It's been going along a lot of years.
Mark, thank you. We can have, you might be talking about something that the city of Wichita may, on the street, but you know what? We'll have our Public Works come by and look at it, and see if it's something that we can assist with, or is some way.
I appreciate that. It's a 2100 block of East Bailey, and in 21, 28.
I've got your address here.
Like I said, the Wildcat guys came through, put the pipeline, so everything running north and south is new, but with their trucks and the years, and my house is going on 80 years old, I've been behind on my taxes. I'm not perfect, but I'm up now, because it's not part of my house payment, but I'd like to see something done.
Okay. And I have fond memories of that neighborhood. In college, I worked at Boulevard Bank, and after college.
You remember Slipper Slide, don't you?
I know exactly where you're talking about. I have fond, fond memories of that, of that, of those years, of about 13 years there.
And I appreciate your time and your ear, and I'll get back to work, but.
And Commissioner Howell has a comment or question?
Thank you, Chairman. I was just going to kind of make some similar comments to what the chairman just made, but you're on this area that's just outside my district, so I would, I'd be glad to come by and take a look at that personally. Thinking about the Commissioner's map, I'm not sure if this is District Two or District One, but it's very, very close to where those lines come together. Nevertheless, again, one of the things we've learned is any government official, whether you're in the city, or the county, or the township, or the state, when it comes to infrastructure like streets, the very first question we all ask ourselves, we all look at each other and ask ourselves, whose responsibility is that one? Who was the owner or the maintainer of that piece of infrastructure? And on this particular thing, since you're talking about a city street, it would be the city in this case. I'm pretty sure, but I'm going to come by and take a look at that. I believe your council member, have you reached out to your council member on this one?
I have tried. I've not received it.
I know him, I have his cell phone. I will be glad to reach out to him as well, and hopefully connect the city to this problem. But one of the problems we have in the city, let me just state, you know, I think they have similar issues across the entire city. There's places where there is, you know, potholes that are being filled, maybe not the way we would like to see them filled. So that is a city challenge, and I think that they have, they need to find a way to solve that problem. You know, they have, I think, put more money into infrastructure repairs in recent years, but I do think that that is, it's one of those things where every governing body has a challenge to keep up with infrastructure, and I know that this is one of those things that frustrates a lot of people in Wichita, that sometimes these potholes don't get filled the way we would like to see them filled, and I'm sure it's frustrating to you. But with that respect, I'll reach out to them, I'll come by and take a look at that as well, and I encourage you to also, again, continue to reach out to them. We'll get together later on and get this solved, okay?
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Don't see any other comments. Have a good day. Next person signed up is David Garren, if I'm reading it right.
Garren, that's true. Thank you, Mr. Wagner. I'll be for the election.
Okay. All right. We will come back to you. And it is Garren? Okay. Thank you. And next up is Carl Peterjohn. Carl?
Yeah.
I guess. For those in the audience and on KPTS, Mr. Peterjohn served on this board for a few terms as a county commissioner. Welcome, Carl.
Thank you, Chairman Meister and Commissioners. My name's Carl Peterjohn, 11328 Texas Street, Wichita, being Commission District Three, and I'm going to give you a variation of, I'm here mainly to speak about the property tax issue, and this is a variation of a presentation I gave across the street, I shouldn't say across the street, at City Hall yesterday. And my reason for doing so, people are hurting, and a recent national report came out showing that there are, the inflation tax is costing the average family over $700 a month, and I don't believe that included the property tax portion of it. And I know Cedric County has traditionally, the county portion of the total property tax bill compared to the other 104 counties in Kansas, we're one of the lowest. But we also have the problem that you guys have to operate under state law. And yesterday, I had an interesting discussion with the mayor. You may want to check it out as part of the public discussion about who's responsible with the appraisal process and the fact that it's a county function, according to the mayor, and that the county is responsible for all the increases due to that. And I think that's simplistic and misleading, but I think there is absolutely some truth in the fact that we've already had a tax increase that's coming forward due to the appraisal process. And the revenue-neutral point, and I really appreciate you letting me come up and speak at this portion because of a prior commitment I've got, it's going to be difficult for me to stay here for your budget discussions if you go past 1015. But my emphasis to you all going forward is that if the appraisal growth that Cedric County enjoys automatically due to property taxes because of a new building, somebody remodeled something, that's good, that's things we want, and that should be part of the tax base. But if we're coming by and we've got folks on fixed income, folks who are chronologically gifted like myself, that's a polite way of saying I'm old, but the fact that a lot of folks are really hurting and with fixed incomes out there, the idea that the mill levy should not be, even if you hold the mill levy, it's the same level, it generates a significant increase in revenue. Now, if some of it, if it's earned, that's fine, but the idea that the value of a home, somebody's been in for 10, 20 years, and the appraiser comes by and says, hey, the valuation went up $10,000. I mean, I will say for the record, I've had as much success in front of the Board of Tax Appeals and appealing my property tax as I have had submitting petitions to City Hall and getting sued in federal, in state court for doing so. It's a difficult process, and I've advised taxpayers to do that, how to do it, and sometimes they're more successful than I've been. But I point this out to you all as part of your presentation and hard budget work that you have to go through, to keep in mind that the mill levy, that we've had one tax increase through the appraisal process, even holding the mill levy at its current level is going to generate more revenue, and that is, in effect, going to be an implicit increase. I don't know what one mill generates for the county right now. The cities, according to the figures they gave yesterday, it was going to increase from, I think, 4.2 to 4.6 million for one mill. And if my memory's right, I think county, countywide, you all receive somewhere between six and seven million. I'm sure the finance folks can give you an exact number, but I wanted to emphasize in my, actually, I have two new roles. I have been involved with the Save Century Two Committee, but outgrowth from that has been a new group called the Better Government Institute. We're putting out educational and informational mailings this year on what was going on with the city. So I really would like to leave you with a, some data, new data from the Tax Foundation. It shows that Kansas property taxes in general, and I realize this goes outside of, it goes way beyond the boundaries of Cedric County, are higher than in three of our four surrounding states, and that this needs to be a concern as you consider your budget deliberations, because if we have a second property tax increase on top of the unelected appraisers' first increase, we'll be hurting our community, I believe, going forward. And so I've got some copies of this Tax Foundation information. I appreciate your attention and time. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. There's maybe a question or two. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. Just wanted to, Carl's one of these guys that likes to get into the weeds and the numbers, and I like to do that, too. So I was going to ask, you know what portion of your property tax actually is for county versus other taxing jurisdictions?
I'd say roughly about a quarter.
A quarter? Mine's about 20%. Some communities, it's actually less than 20%. Do you believe that Sedgwick...
But you're in a different city and a different school district than I am in.
That's correct. That's right. So a lot of us in the county have different situations, where we have different jurisdictions we pay to. You're in Wichita, correct?
I am in Wichita and in Wichita School District.
Okay, so you're saying 25%. So that may be common to a lot of other folks that may be listening, but about 25%. And do you think, again, so I'm looking at numbers going way back, back to actually 30 years because of some of the comments made yesterday, which of those jurisdictions you think has raised taxes the most during that 30-year period?
Well, it's very tricky because when you look at the portion that goes for the school portion, the changes, the statewide mill levy is 21 and 1/2 mills, but 20 of that is for K-12, and sometimes it gets rolled into the, the 20-mill portion gets rolled into the school district portion, and sometimes it isn't. And so you've got to, unfortunately, like you said, get into the weeds, and it's partly where it can get tricky, but the county's mill levy, in my recollection, the mill levy's been very stable for at least the last 12 to 15 years, if that answers your question.
I have a slide I'll put up later, but I want to do it right this minute, but I have a slide. If you'll get to watch this later on, I'll present, if you will, a picture of what that would look like. In fact, in the last 15 years, our mill levy's actually gone down by two mills. The city has very, I listened to the meeting yesterday a couple times, the best as I could, it was very long, but I can't, I lost track of how many times they said, we haven't raised our mill levy in 30 years, and that's just not true. And maybe, maybe they didn't vote for tax increase. I mean, the laws have changed. Theirs has been more stable the last few years, but going back, because of technical adjustments, I believe, maybe other reasons, but there have been increases in their mill levy. In fact, the one they passed yesterday is a record high over the last 30 years.
Well, here, let me mention a technical problem that exists, and I don't know if this is a problem for you all on your side. The state assesses utility property, including railroads and electric, and my understanding is that those figures aren't out yet, or at least if they are, the city doesn't have them for what the tax base. And I firmly believe that you all actually don't vote for a mill levy. You vote for a budget, and then the county clerk actually has to do the math to crank the numbers for that budget against the tax base and what they believe the assessed value will be to come up with the final mill levy calculation, and that's something I would like to have seen changed and was unsuccessful in doing so when I was, had the privilege of sitting where you all are today.
However, I would tell you, we have the secret formula. We know how to calculate that, too. So we pass a budget. We know what the mill levy is going to be. The way we build a budget typically is we look at last year's mill levy that was passed, and that's the, that's the beginning of the next year's budget. We look at the assessed value from the appraiser and our historic mill levy from the previous budget cycle, and that kind of gives us a goal on how to build a budget. That's the process. But we could lower the budget and calculate a different mill levy. Again, we could do the, lower the budget, and we know what the mill levy will calculate out to because we know the formula. So I understand your point. We do pass the budget.
Let me, let me ask you. I know Lindsey Pulver says here in the audience that you may have the numbers. I mean, the utility portion is not the largest part of the tax base, but it is a significant, I'm thinking 3% to 5%, is that a reasonable number, Lindsey? 5%. So you guys are kind of shooting in the dark a little bit budgetarily, in my opinion, when you don't have the figures, and of course, you've got tax appeals that are ongoing, too.
That's right. And anyway, I'll wrap this up. I just want to make a point that the, I guess, two points. The largest tax increase is in the, is the public education sector, no question. If you look at anything going back 30 years, you'll see how that has just exploded in our state. It's not just Sedgwick County, it's everywhere. And the second thing I'd like to say is the state of Kansas, again, they don't really debate the 21.5 mills. They just pass it. They capture the increase. There's no discussion, there's no public vote specifically for that portion of the tax bill. So again, the state levy's 21.5 mills. Ours is right at 29. We'll debate whether it's 29.37 versus maybe something slightly different than that today, but 29 versus 21.5, we're not drastically different than the state. They're not having a debate at all. They just pass, they just, they put it in the budget and pass the whole budget in one big piece, and there's no discussion whether that's the right thing to do. So we're trying to trim our budget, and you did mention we're one of the lowest in the state. Actually, we're the second lowest. Johnson County is lower because they have more assessed value, but also the county commission there has about a $1.6 billion budget. So we're a billion dollars higher than our budget with about 120,000 more people. So it is an enormous budget they have up there, and of course, their assessed value can support that. But I'm not here to debate Johnson County's budget. I am just here to say...
Me neither.
I am here to say that I think that Sedgwick County specifically, and I have data here, I've been doing a call, called Tax Talk, and I think, thank you for Becky Tuttle yesterday mentioning this, and being once you hear Tax Talk, I got data, but I can show you data that shows how Sedgwick County has, has moved towards more efficiency and more effectiveness over the last 14, 15 years to the point that something's got to give. We cannot continue these, these trend lines. Something has to change. We have, I can prove that we are more efficient and effective in doing more with less than we ever have before. And again, that's the challenge of government. And again, when we're there, then the options, of course, are to cut services, cut salaries, and not deliver services, a tax increase, or use ending balance. Those are our only choices to get through a budget cycle. We don't have the ending balance to cover it, so we have no choice today but either cut services, cut salaries, or raise tax revenue. So that's our, that's our three options today.
Well, I appreciate the difficulties of budgeting, and I know, and I'll say one thing on behalf of the state, I don't know whether it happened when you were in the legislature or not, but the exemption, there's a homeowner exemption on the state portion of the mill levy, and that's been recently increased at the state level, so that they have been, they have been, they're cognizant of the problem. My purpose for speaking here today is to say, the folks I hear from who say, hey, you were on the commission, what, how are things, how does this whole process work, and why am I getting an automatic, you know, why am I getting a tax increase? Nobody's voting for it because I get appraisal notices every March, and it keeps going up and up, and I'm just here to make sure that the taxpayer's thought stays in your mind because we have a, we have a lot of folks hurting out there, and you've got a huge amount of folks saying, hey, we need help here and here, and...
Well, I'm not here to defend the process. I'm not here to defend, to say we shouldn't find efficiencies and find ways to trim this budget. I think we should. But at the end of the day, I don't think the county is really the biggest problem on this, on your budget bill, the county actually is the smallest portion of your budget bill for most people.
Well, that's why I started out at City Hall yesterday and will continue. I appreciate your folks' attention and time. Thank you.
Wait, Carl. One more question. Commissioner Dennis?
Mr. Peterjohn, thank you for being here today. I appreciate it. I did watch portions of the city council meeting yesterday, and I did catch most of what you had to say, and I appreciate that you've been taking time out of your schedule to be at both of those locations. A couple of things that I heard yesterday from the mayor is, the mayor said that the appraised value for the county is above inflation, and I guess he doesn't quite understand how that it gets analyzed and how that it's computed for the appraised value. Certainly, the appraised value, if we look at all the properties, including all new development, all remodels, everything that's added, and then you add that to the increase, it is going to be above inflation, but if you take out all of the new builds, we're not above inflation. So I just wanted to clarify that, and you were talking when he brought that up, and that was absolutely incorrect, his statement, and I wanted to make sure that I corrected his statement.
Commissioner Dennis, if I could just respond briefly. I'm not here to defend the mayor, and if my comments yesterday, I think, would fairly reflect that fact.
Yeah, I agree, and I appreciate what you had to say yesterday. Another thing that the mayor said was that county government increases taxes on almost all of us. That's a direct quote. I wrote it down as he said it. Said Sedgwick County government did that. Well, you know, he has the capability to adjust his mill levy, and he doesn't have to increase taxes, but they did. They took advantage of it, and they voted for it. I think it was four to three.
You're right, four to three.
Is how they voted on their budget yesterday. But again, that was an incorrect statement from the, from the mayor yesterday, and I wanted to set the record straight.
Glad to help to do so, Commissioner.
Well, thank you.
Okay.
He also asked a question, when did Sedgwick County not exceed the RNR rate? Well, I admit, we, Sedgwick County government is almost all service-oriented. We got over 40 departments, and those 40 departments are things like EMS and fire, although it's a separate budget item, 911. We provide services. When people ask what Sedgwick County does, I tell them, we take care of people, and it takes care of its staff in order to be able to do that. And today, if you go out and try and hire somebody, you can't hire them at the rate that you hired them a couple of weeks, a month, a years ago. If you want to go out and build anything, or buy gasoline, or buy food, and all the different expenses that we have, go over to the jail and see what it takes to operate something like that. It costs more money this year. So I admit, we're going to vote today to have something in it above the RNR rate, but to say a statement like the mayor did, when did Sedgwick County not exceed the RNR rate? He probably ought to look at the city rather than at this organization. One other question that was asked of you yesterday that I thought was a little unfair of asking you is Councilman Bluebaugh asked a question about the relationship between the appraiser and the county clerk, county, the appraiser and the county Board of Commissioners, and I think you gave a very good answer. I don't know if he still understands it, but we appoint the appraiser every four years. In the meantime, he doesn't work for us, and that's because if he worked for us, we could say, oh, well, I need you to raise appraisals on everybody because we need more money. We can't do that because he doesn't work for us. He works for the Property Valuation Division in Topeka. So I hope that, I know that Councilman Bluebaugh is thinking about running for county commission, so I hope he understands the relationship between the appraiser and the Board of County Commissioners. So I did have an opportunity to listen to what you had to say yesterday. I'm sorry I put you on the spot today a little bit because I wanted to refute some of the things that were said while you were there, because it's important that the community understands what our mission is, that we support all of Sedgwick County, not just the city of Wichita. We take care of all of Sedgwick County, and the functions that we perform for all of Sedgwick County cost us more this year than it did last year.
Well, and I'll add this. The third county commission district has more square miles than any of the other county commission districts, and Sedgwick County has 1,000 square miles, which I believe is roughly six times larger than the square miles inside the boundaries of the city of Wichita, although obviously Wichita is the largest population municipality in Sedgwick County.
Well, I'll call you Carl because you're a friend. Carl, thank you very much for being here, and I'm sorry that I kind of used you to make a couple of points that I was going to make later on, but you worked very well. Thank you.
Thank you all for your attention and time.
Thanks, Carl. Just a note, we did have a couple people also sign up after we just got started, so we'll go, we'll go ahead and let them be a part of the sign up. I would put it at 10, and again, for those two people that have signed up a little late, we're, this is the public agenda, so you can speak now or you can speak under the item H, which is the public hearing on the budget. So we'll, but we'll go at the next, and I've told the security that the public sign up is ended as of now, as we're in our meeting. Okay, so next up was Brett Anderson. Wait, okay. And next up is LaFonda Gray. You want to speak now?
Yes, please.
Okay. Did I pronounce your name right?
Oh, you did, you did. I would have corrected you if you didn't. How y'all doing this morning, Commissioner and Chair? My name is LaFonda Gray, First Sergeant, retired, United States Army, Department of Defense, after 26 years, military police investigator, and my biggest thing is this, I moved here from Atlanta, Georgia, and I never really got into the house-owning type thing because the government took care of us, and we relied upon people as you all to make the decisions on what we need to do as far as paying taxes. Now, my thing is about this tax thing. My taxes are put in with my mortgage, so I'm on, I'm retired now, and I jump on the bandwagon with Carl, whoever Carl is. I'm about this, you know, we don't make the money that we used to, I used to make when I wasn't in the military, so, you know, now I'm out, now I have all these injuries from all these three campaigns I've been in, Desert Storm, Grenada, and Panama, that now I can't get out and work like I need to work due to neuropathy and trap mellow and things of that nature. Not to want you, I want you to feel sorry for me. I definitely don't want you to do that, but I just, I'm asking the commissioners to really consider to look at this thing with the, with the veterans as far as taking care of veterans. We did a very great service for this country. It almost brings tears to my eyes that it's just hard to make it anymore, and I did a good job, and I just think that you should take into consideration and come up with some type of program that you can help veterans with their mortgages and taxes on every year, and it goes up, and when your taxes increase, my mortgage increases. So I just want and ask of you and beg of you to look at some type of program that can be implemented, that helps service members that come back from overseas and as such. I thank you very much. That's all I have.
Yes, sir. Thanks for your service. We have a comment from Commissioner Dennis. Your question?
Thanks, sir, for your service. We sincerely appreciate it.
Thank you.
You have two veterans on this bench today, Commissioner Howell and myself.
Thank you for your service.
I'm 29 years retired military, so, and I served during all of the different campaigns that you served in, not there, but I was in the military during each one of those.
Yes, sir.
And we do care about veterans. I hope when you walked in the door, you saw a Purple Heart flag hanging.
I did.
And we just declared Sedgwick County a Purple Heart County. We just created a Veterans Court, and we're going to have an opening of that coming up in a week or so. I hope that you've had an opportunity to join and meet with some of the people with the Veterans Coalition that we have here in Sedgwick County.
I have.
So we're always looking for ways that we can help the veterans. So I know that there's some ideas, I don't know if you have any kind of disability as a result of your service in the military, but there are some ways that you can reduce your taxes if you have some disabilities from the military. So again, both Commissioner Howell and I keep veterans at the forefront of our thoughts each and every day. Again, thank you, sir, for your service.
Thank you, and I was steady dodging bullets, not trying to get hit by bullets, so I understand exactly what you're saying, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Okay, next up is Sean Horsen.
Oh, wait.
Are you ready? Okay.
Sir.
Yes, sir. And then our two new ones, Maxine Bostic. Do you want to speak now, or do you want to wait for the, okay, she's coming down. Good morning.
Good morning.
You have, state your name and address.
I know some of you, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. You have, I just wanted to make, you have a name and address, and you have five minutes.
I'm an old classroom teacher, so I can get loud. Okay.
Okay. The clerk has the timer for five minutes.
Am I better? Am I too close?
No, you're good. You're good.
Okay. I want to thank you for how gracious the deputy and the lady who took my late information was. They didn't have to do that. I got lost. I don't drive downtown. I drive past it. I go to the City Hall. I went to the Reagan Building. I know how to get there, and with lots of help. I'm late because I'm trying to find you. I'm here on behalf of educators. The $22,000 thing is not going to help us. I'm sure you have employees for the county that own, and it's not going to help them. All of us vote, and we cannot afford any more raises in taxes. We've got 50% increases in water, 50% increases in gas. We've got fifty percent increases in water, fifty percent increases in gas, electricity has plans to increase, all state and school employees, we can't get out and, and, and get a second job. You keep living, you won't be able to either. My husband was a vet, my son was a vet, many relatives were veterans. I fly the American flag at my house outside every day because my husband and my son, and because of those. I ask that you, when I went to the city, they blamed the county. We can always kick the bucket around. And I, I just pray that you realize you reap what you sow, just keep living. So, I pray that you'll do something about continuing to raise these taxes, because we have supported your, the city's structure, the county's structure, we know it's more than Wichita, we taught that in schools. But please, no more raises in taxes. Thank you.
Okay, any questions? I don't see any. Thank you. Yes, thank you. Next up is Pastor Rosemary, I don't know how, Pastor Rosemary, I'm sorry, I don't know how to pronounce your last name. Do you want to speak now, or you want to speak during the budget? Do you want to speak now, or do you want to speak during the budget hearing? Okay, all right. Okay, so that is the, the end of the public agenda. Any comments? I don't see any, make a motion to receive and file. Motion in a second, any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, please.
Consideration of minutes, item A, regular meeting minutes of August 2nd, 2023.
Commissioners, if it's okay, item A, B, C, D are the regular minutes of, I'd like to combine those, and if it's no objection, the minutes of August 2nd, the minutes, the special meeting minutes of August 2nd, special minutes of August 7th, and the regular meeting minutes of August 9th. You've had a chance to review those and make any suggestions or corrections. With that, I will, I don't see any comments, so I'll make a motion that we approve item A, B, C, and D as one motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion passes, next item, please.
Proclamations, item E, proclamation declaring Mulvane Old Settlers Day.
Yeah, we've asked Commissioner Howell if he'd like to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is in my district, so I am very pleased to read the proclamation regarding Mulvane Old Settlers. It says, whereas since eighteen seventy-three, people have gathered at different farms and groves on the Ninnisca River to celebrate the harvest, and whereas the event eventually expanded to become the Quad County Old Settlers Picnic, drawing people from Sumner, Sedgwick, Butler, and Kelly Counties. And whereas the event became a reunion for pioneers from each of the four counties on the last Thursday in August each year. And whereas in nineteen thirty-eight, the event was renamed Mulvane Old Settlers Day, a name it carries to this day. And whereas in nineteen forty-seven, the Saddle Club built a new facility west of Mulvane, where the rodeo events have been held ever since. And whereas, in the hundred and fifty years since the gathering began, many activities have been added, including musical performances, a parade, speeches, and awards, making the event an important part of Mulvane and the surrounding area's history. Now therefore, be it resolved that Chairman Peter F. Meitzner and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim August the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three as Mulvane Old Settlers Day in Sedgwick County, and extend sincere gratitude into Mulvane Old Settlers Day for enriching the lives of Sedgwick County citizens over the past one hundred and fifty years. Mr. Chairman, I'd be very pleased to make a motion, we would adopt this proclamation.
Okay, I'll second that. The mo, motion in a second. Any other questions? None, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
And to receive today's proclamation, I would like to recognize Nancy Armstrong, who's the Vice President of Mulvane Old Settlers, Mulvane Community Foundation.
Okay, good morning, and, welcome, welcome to the meeting.
Thank you very much. There's a lot of people that have worked very hard for this, and we appreciate this, and hope you all come.
Okay. When I was a, a small child and grew up in, in South Wichita, and remember Mom and Dad taking us to the Old Settlers Day celebration when I was little, so I have fond memories of it, haven't been there in quite a few years.
It's gotten bigger and bigger.
I bet it has.
And this being the hundred and fiftieth, it's going to be a
A big one.
Much larger.
Okay.
And can you please talk about the parade? Is it this coming Saturday?
It's this coming Saturday, starts at eleven o'clock.
Okay.
And goes all the way down through downtown and around.
It should be cooler by Saturday, I understand, potentially. Is that possible?
Yes.
I think that's possible, so I hope that, I hope and pray that happens. Let me just share, thank you, Chairman, for the chance to speak, I want to just share, there's not a lot of parades going on around the county at this time. This is the best parade of the year. The Sedgwick County Fair has a great parade they put on, this is about, about as good. I love it, they've got all the fun stuff, they have music performances, they have little motorcycles, little cars, they have water, people squirting water, they got balloons, they have lots of candy, horses. I, I can tell you, this is a very long parade, a very well-attended parade, there are thousands and thousands of people that come together. I know this isn't just for Mulvane, this is for a very large area, so people across Sedgwick County, please come to Mulvane on Saturday and enjoy this wonderful event.
We've got a big car show that day, and, oh, my mind just went blank.
If they want to find out more information, is there a website they can go and look at some details?
There is absolutely a website, and a Facebook page.
And you want, you know what that, mulvaneoldsettlers.com? Or, okay, so they can go there and find out the agenda and find out all the details of all the events.
Exactly.
Fantastic, thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry. Go in front of the commissioners, yeah.
Are you supposed to stand? Oh, I guess we're going down.
Is this right here, middle man?
Yes, thank you.
All right, you ready, guys? Three, two, one. Two more. Three, two.
And as a side recognition, the mayor of Mulvane is in the audience. Mayor, welcome, welcome to the meeting. Okay, and good luck. Somebody just texted me, it is going to be ninety-nine degrees that day, so, okay, that's all right. Okay. Cool front coming through. Okay. Next, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Appointments, item F, resolution appointing Commissioner Ryan Beatty to the Wichita Area Metropolitan Planning Organization.
Okay, Mr. Wagner.
Yes, thank you, Chairman, Justin Wagner, County Counselor. This item that's in front of you is a resolution appointing Commissioner Beatty to WOMPo, the Wichita Area Metropolitan Planning Organization. Commissioner Lopez currently serves in this position, does not intend to continue serving in that position. The chairman has recommended Commissioner Beatty to fill that upcoming vacancy. It is specifically reserved for a Sedgwick County elected official. The resolution is in order, and the recommended action is to adopt the resolution.
Okay, Commissioner Beatty.
Chairman, thank you, and thank you to Commissioner Lopez for the opportunity. She currently sits in the seat, and she's looking at a few other board assignments and some things, and felt this would be a good opportunity, not just to learn, but WOMPo does a lot of things in this community, and a lot of information, a lot of data, so I'm encouraged and looking forward to the opportunity, so, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Being none, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item G, resolution reappointing Jessica Provines to the Sedgwick County Mental Health Advisory Board.
Okay, Mr. Wagner.
Yes, Chairman, this resolution would reappoint Jessica Provines to the Mental Health Advisory Board as recommended for reappointment by Commissioner Lopez. The resolution is in order, and the recommended action is to adopt the resolution.
Okay. Commissioner Lopez, sorry about that.
Thank you so much. I, Jessica's not here, but I wanted to thank her for her service on this board. She also runs the Suspenders for Hope with WSU, and is really connected with, with this community and trying to collaborate with us as much as possible when it comes to addressing the mental health needs in Sedgwick County. So, I will make the motion to approve the resolution, and want to thank Jessica Provines as well.
I'll second the motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, we are approaching the new business, but we will recess the county commission meeting, and we will call to order the Board of Sedgwick County, oh, I'm sorry, the governing body of the Fire District Number One, a call to order the governing body of Fire District Number One, Madam Clerk.
Roll call, Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Beatty.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Was there anybody wanting to speak on the public agenda for the Fire Department, for the Fire Agenda? Don't see any, we will move on. Next item, please.
Consideration of minutes, item A, fire meeting minutes of August 2nd, 2023.
Commissioners, if it's okay, like we've done similarly, item A, B, and C are the fire minutes of August 2nd, the special meeting minutes of August 2nd, and the fire meeting minutes of August 9th. I propose that we make a motion that we approve all three of these items, A, B, and C.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any questions, corrections? Don't see any, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, please.
New business, item D, public hearing regarding the twenty twenty-four Fire District Number One budget and proposed property tax levy in excess of the revenue neutral rate and adoption of revenue neutral rate resolution.
Okay, good morning, Mr. Manager.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioner, Tom Stoles, County Manager's Office. This morning, it's the second public hearing on the twenty twenty-four recommended budget for Fire District One, and the first and only required hearing referenced the recommended budget's proposed estimated tax rate. It totals twenty-seven million, seven hundred and thirty-five thousand, and two hundred and twenty-five dollars. This budget will be supported with a property tax levy of twenty-one million, three hundred and eight thousand, five hundred and forty-seven dollars, which will require a mill levy of approximately seventeen point eight eight nine mils, based on the estimated assessed valuation and subject to technical adjustments. I recommend you open the public hearing, receive public comment, then close the public hearing once it is over, and receive and file public comments. Then I recommend you move to approve the resolution to levy a property tax rate exceeding the revenue neutral rate. Chairman?
Okay, any questions at this time? I don't see any, so we will officially open the, the, open the meeting for public, public comment on this budget. Does anybody want to address the commission on public? I don't see any, so we will, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, all right.
Okay, Commissioners.
Are you the speaker, or are you, did we close?
I am a speaker on behalf of your Fire District Steering Council.
That's correct, thank you, thank you.
Yes, so, Commissioners, you may recall that you all had asked the Fire District Steering Council to basically give you some feedback on the Fire District budget. And so, the chairman of that board has put together a letter, you all received it yesterday, but I did assure them when we were having that meeting that we would read this into the record. So, if you would bear with me while I read this, and then, Clerk, I will give you all a copy, so you have it for the minutes. So, this is addressed from the chairman of the Fire District One Steering Council to the chairman of the Sedgwick County Fire District One Fire Board.
Can you speak into the mic a little bit?
Louder?
A little bit.
Wow, nobody's ever said that to me before. Yes, I will speak up, is that better? Okay. Dear Chairman Meitzner, I am writing on behalf of the Sedgwick County Fire District One Steering Council to express our unanimous support for the proposed budget as presented and published for the Fire District. As representatives of the community and stakeholders, we believe these investments are crucial for the continued success and growth of Fire District One. The proposed budget will provide the necessary tools and resources to enhance efficiency, effectiveness, and the overall performance. Furthermore, we recognize that competitive compensation is essential in attracting and retaining personnel. A fair and competitive pay structure not only acknowledges the dedication of the existing workforce, but also ensures that recruitment of skilled professionals who will contribute to the sustained progress of Fire District One. Based on the presentation from the professional staff and endorsement by the union representatives present at the meeting, we recommend approval of the fifteen-step pay plan with the acknowledgement that the council had limited time to evaluate the proposed plans due to the budget timeline. Supporting the fifteen-step pay plan is a responsible step toward the long-term stability and performance of the Fire District, whereas the other proposed plans offered no solution or temporary solutions. The council intends to work with Sedgwick County and Fire District One staff to further research pay to include considering alternative compensation options such as advanced care provider pay. We firmly believe that by providing the necessary financial support, we are investing in the future of our community and ensuring the continued delivery of high-quality services. It closes with, we request your careful consideration of this proposal. The Fire District One Steering Council is confident the recommended budget with the fifteen-step pay plan allocation of funds will yield positive outcomes in twenty twenty-four with a look to the future for the Fire District and the communities they serve. End letter.
Okay. We did receive a copy of it late yesterday afternoon, and so, but thank you for reading that into the, into the record. Any questions about that? I don't see any, so we will close the public hearing, and, but I'll make a motion to receive and file.
Second.
Motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Okay, next item, please. Wait. Don't we have to do the revenue neutral rate? Oh, oh, okay, was there, yeah, is there any discussion before we make a motion on the revenue neutral rate? Any? Okay. I'll make a motion on the Fire District. I will move that we adopt a resolution to levy a property tax rate exceeding the revenue neutral rate for the twenty twenty-four Fire District One budget.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any questions? Don't see any, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Okay, next item, please.
Item E, adoption of the twenty twenty-four Sedgwick County Fire District One budget.
Morning again, Commissioner, Chairman of Commission, Tom Stoles, County Manager's Office. Before you rest the budget recommendation for the Fire District One, I had some general comments, we're out of order because we usually talk general budget first, but suffice it to say that we handled the budget requests from the Fire Department as we did the rest of the organization. We began talking early in February with the chief and his staff, and the recommended budget came forward with two positions, one is a fleet mechanic position, and another is a training officer position, so that the Fire District could stabilize their training curriculum and management. The new information that came up after the recommended budget was some discussion on[1701.94] compensation issues, and we realized that what was in the recommended budget was not going to meet the needs of the Fire District for a number of reasons. And so we have spent a lot of time in the last several weeks discussing fire compensation and some options for the commission to consider, and I'd like Lindsey to go over those options now with you before you consider the budget.
Okay. Welcome back, Lindsey.
Thank you, Chairman. For the record, Lindsey Poviso, your CFO. So Commissioners, in front of you right now, you have a page that looks like this. It's a light green sheet, and before you actually vote on these motions, like Tom said, we wanted to walk through what you're actually voting on so that we are crystal clear and we have that documentation. So what you'll see in this very first motion is that we would encourage the commission, based on staff recommendation, after a thorough vetting of multiple proposals. We recommend that you all adopt what's considered the Evergreen 15-Step Plan. That step plan is included in the backup documentation for you, and it looks like this. So step one of this motion is approving this pay plan. Step two, then, would be to also approve the placements of our current staff onto that pay plan. That is also in your proposal. Then you have consideration of adding four positions to a fire pay plan, not the step plan, but a fire pay plan. And those four positions are the fire chief, the fire marshal, and two deputy fire chiefs. So for the fire chief position, we recommend a salary of $154,942.97. For the fire marshal position, we recommend $127,481.94. And then there are two deputy fire chief positions. For the position ending in 1588, we recommend a salary of $127,481.94. And then for the final deputy fire chief position ending in 0734, we recommend pay of $120,163.95. So in terms of that portion of the fire motion, that is the placement for these positions onto a fire pay plan, but not the step plan. So we want to go through those motions of creating the plans and you all authorizing the placements. We also are asking that you authorize a transfer of budget authority of $700,000 from the proposed 5 million contingency to the Fire District operating budget in order to support these pay adjustments. We also then ask that you authorize staff to make technical adjustments. So this process is still in flux. There are still, I know Sheena has expressed an interest to work with the fire chief to really go through all of this with a fine-tooth comb before this is implemented January 1st, so that very first motion that's listed here takes into account all of that and also references the supporting materials so that in the future we have something to reference. So with that, happy to turn it over to you all for discussion or questions, but that's what we recommend to you.
Okay. And my compliments to you and for organizing the documents for us.
That's all Lauren.
Lauren, thank you. And as we, we got a couple of comments, but also want to shout out to Chief and Chief Doug and working with HR. Thank you, HR. Thank you, county management, for really working through this to try to come up with a resolution that solves some issues. So, but with that, we've got a few comments or questions. Commissioner Beatty?
Thank you, Chairman, and I'd be happy to make a motion after comments. But I want to thank, first and foremost, I want to thank Chief Williams and all the people that have been involved. These discussions have been pretty intense, the last few months in particular. Lindsey, your staff, Lauren, your staff, Sheena, your staff with HR, everyone has dug deep at the request of the commission and management and the Fire Department to really find a way forward that accomplishes some goals. The primary goal that I think all of us unanimously have discussed publicly is staffing stability, is we can do nothing in public safety unless we first have staffing stability. And this is a step in that direction, a significant step in that direction. The second thing, this is beyond this budget, but as we begin to look forward in the Fire District, I'm not a good poker player, I'll reveal my cards early, but we have got to find a way to unify all the capacity that is the Fire District. We're going to move forward likely with a motion that I'll make shortly that will keep that mill levy at 17.889, but there is significant potential and significant capacity in the Fire District that if we can, with Sedgwick County's lead and this steering council's lead, we could unify a district and not only provide better service, which is the ultimate goal, but we can also take that mill levying over the course of the next few years, really start to drive that down as we get more assessed growth in the district. That's my goal. Publicly stated now that that's where I hope we're moving towards, but the business at hand today is doing something that's right by this Fire District, stabilizing this staffing and putting these firefighters in a position to move forward and demonstrate the value that they bring to this county. So I'll stand by for more comments, but at the appropriate time, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay. Will do. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. First of all, Lindsey and your entire staff, you worked hard on this. Sheena and her entire staff really went above and beyond trying to figure out the difference between a perfect plan, a 50% plan, a 12-step plan, 15-step plan. We looked at a lot of stuff, or you did, and you had to make us so that we understood what you did, which was probably the hardest job you had. But we also formed an advisory committee to the Fire Department recently, and one of my concerns is that we weren't presenting them with the options as we went into this. And I appreciate the staff then stepped up and educated our advisory council, and they came back with the recommendation, and that's what they're supposed to do. We don't have to follow it. In this case, we're going to, but I'm pretty sure. I'm only one vote. But I appreciate their work on this. The Fire Department, you all were involved in this every step of the way. If you recall, a year ago, I was a little disturbed with the way that the system ran a year ago. And actually, as the fire chief was getting...
Thank you so much. When we first talked about the different options on pay plans, I made it clear that I thought the 15 plan was the best option, but looking at what that did to our budget, I was concerned and wanted to go with the 12-step and less, and we were able to balance that budget somewhere so that we weren't spending under the 20% in outer year. So I'm very grateful that you guys have been able to look at this so closely and that we were able to get this done. I think we're all in agreement that the 15-step plan is what's best for fire, and I'm glad that we're going to be able to, hopefully, it sounds like from everything I've heard so far, be able to do that today. I just, I want to take just a second and say that I really think it's important, as we're having these discussions, just to bring up that we are still talking about the fire union. Right now, we are working with Doug, as we ought to, but we're also working with the fire union, even though they don't have those rights as a fire union. So we're just not doing this as good as I think we ought to be doing it because we are kind of split in who we're talking to. We're kind of allowing the union to exist, and we're using them to work with on these things, but we're not giving them that recognition that they deserve. So we are bringing, not we, you guys will be bringing the fire union discussion to the advisory board next month, which I'm really excited to hear what they, the input that they have. I know that they've been listening to them already, and so, like I said, again, we're kind of recognizing them without recognizing them. So I'm just, I'm excited to hear what they have to say about that, but I just really want to thank you guys for the work that went into this because I do think it's the right direction, going to the 15 steps aligns us with other step plans that we have in the county, and so I think this is the best option. So thank you so much for all the work.
Okay. Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate the chance to speak. I'm not going to rehash the history. I've done that numerous times in the past. I'm not going to do it again today. We have a difference of opinion on how things happen in the past. I have my perspective, and my colleagues have theirs. I think it's time for us to move forward, okay? I think we have a solution that's going to fix this problem. Let's just move forward. I'd like to remind us that had we not done what we did last year and this year, firefighters, I believe last year, were offered a $15.45 per hour wage. We moved that up to $18, and then, of course, with a pay adjustment this year, that's $18.36 an hour to start. So if you take that times our 29, 12 hours per year, by my calculations, I may be off a little bit, but it's about $53,464 to start. That's a decent wage for someone who puts their life on the line for our people. As it was before, it was almost, it was close to $10,000 less. So this was a critical change. I'm glad we made the changes that needed to happen. This is the right thing to do. I want to move forward, and I also recognize a couple of other things that have happened here. Again, we have a nine-member steering commission. One thing that's unique about that steering commission is all of them pay district taxes. I live in Derby, so I don't pay district taxes. Some of the other commissioners don't pay district taxes because we live in cities that provide fire protection services through city taxes. And so the nine-member commission represents taxpayer perspective, and it said it was unanimous they supported the 15-step plan. Second of all, I appreciate Finance and other staff because just a few weeks ago, we weren't sure we had the finances to support this plan, and there was a lot of resistance potentially, a lot of concern, I should say. I think we've solved that problem, and I appreciate the work that you did to make that happen. Thank you so much. Thank you, Lauren. Thank you, others that worked on that. Sheena, thank you for your work on this. This process started several months back, quite a few months ago. Thank you, Chief Williams, for your work on this as well. I am so glad we have a plan. I think that is going to be, it's a fair plan. It's not maybe everything we have to do. I don't plan on visiting this next year. I think we'll just do normal stuff. I think we've substantially solved this enough. I think we can put off any significant structural changes for some time. So this is going to stabilize, Commissioner Beatty already said it stabilizes our workforce, and that was the problem. There were some unfair things happening in our pay structure. This actually fixes that somewhat. It fixes compression somewhat, I think, pretty well, actually. So I'm glad to support the 15-step plan when Commissioner Beatty makes a motion to do so. Thank you.
Okay. Don't see any other comments, so I believe that we're ready for this motion, and I want to make sure that us as the Fire Board, that any changes from the recommended budget must be voted on, so that's why we're making a motion at this time. Okay. Commissioner Beatty?
Thank you, Chairman. I move that we adopt the Evergreen 15-step pay plan as proposed, add deputy chief and fire chief to the fire pay plan as proposed, and approve placements as proposed. To accomplish the adjustments, I also move that we transfer $700,000 from the Fire District contingency to the Fire District operating budget for the increased cost of this step plan and authorize staff to make technical adjustments as needed.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. That motion carries. All right. Next up, under this same item E, is the budget, the Fire District budget. So, is that right?
I've got E for that.
Oh, is that E? Right. We're on item E. County Manager? Bear with me one second.
Commissioners, you are able to vote on a budget at this point in time.
Right.
And you should have a motion that looks like this, that will allow you to do that, as long as you don't have any other changes to the budget.
Okay. So with this last motion that we completed, it does make a slight change to the overall budget, but we can, any comments about the overall Fire District budget? And being none, I need to make the motion. You got the motion? You got the motion? All right. Okay. Mr. Beatty? Commissioner Beatty?
I move we adopt the resolution for the 2024 Fire District One budget that includes an operating budget of $27,735,225, which is approximately equivalent to 17.889 mils, based on the estimated assessed valuation, subject to review and technical adjustments.
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? I don't see any. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries. Congratulations.
You have a Fire District budget.
Right. We have a Fire District budget, and again, you've had some thanks, but thank you, HR, Sheena, your staff, greatly thank you. Chief, thank you, and Finance, thank you, and Management, thank you. Okay. Any other business before the Fire District? I don't see any, and we don't have any executive session, so we will close the Fire District meeting, and we will reopen the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners. Madam Clerk, next item.
New business. Item H, Public Hearing Regarding the 2024 Sedgwick County Budget and Proposed Property Tax Levy in Excess of the Revenue Neutral Rate and Adoption of Revenue Neutral Rate Resolution.
Okay.
Chairman of Commission, good morning again. Tom Stoles, County Manager's Office. This morning is the second public hearing for the 2024 Recommended Budget, and the first and only required hearing referenced the recommended budget's proposed estimated tax rate. Sedgwick County's recommended operating budget totals $518,464,784. This budget will be supported with a property tax levy of $188,880,368, which is approximately equivalent to 29.370 mils, based on the estimated assessed valuation and subject to technical adjustment. I recommend you open the public hearing, receive public comment, close the public hearing once it is over, and receive and file public comments. Then I recommend you move to approve the resolution to levy a property tax rate exceeding the revenue neutral rate. Chairman?
Okay. Any questions or comments before we go to the public hearing? Okay. I don't see any, so we will now allow the speakers that had signed up to address the commission. The first one we had was David Guerin. Welcome to the meeting.
Thank you. I am David Guerin. I live in the Rockwood neighborhood, just southwest of Rock and Central in East Wichita. Chairman Meitzner, thanks for having me up here today, for giving me the time to speak. I originally came to Wichita in 2002. Air Force brought me here, and I met my wife, subsequently took her around the globe, but we decided we were going to, when I retired in 2021, we're going to raise our family in Wichita. Coming back to Wichita, obviously, the summer of 2021 was not a great time to buy a house. It was a dogfight, and, but we managed, right? And we did our due diligence to come up with a budget, buy a house that we can afford, and move forward. Well, over the last two years, that mortgage payment has gone up approximately 20% to the two of almost $400 a month, largely due to assessed rates. Now, I had the joy, I guess, of attending the city meeting yesterday with Carl and I know Maxine, and I think Carl spoke much more eloquently than I did, or than I would. I think this board got thrown under the bus yesterday by Mayor Whipple. The idea that, for him to say that there is no mechanism for the city to address over appraisals in the city and the budget is probably not fully true. I mean, there's no easy way to do it. The hard way is to lower your mill levy, right? And now it comes to time that we have to make these tough decisions. This is not an infinite well. At some point, we're going to price people out of their homes. One of the first things I did with my new employer here in Wichita when I retired, we had to renegotiate our contract for our union. And as part of that renegotiation, I was put on a team to assess our cost of living in Wichita and the state of Kansas, as opposed to our other sites in Oklahoma, North Carolina, and New Hampshire. And I was honestly shocked at what I found. Now, I did not do my due diligence when I decided to retire in Kansas because my in-laws and wife basically made the decision for me, but what I found when I came to Kansas, we beat New Hampshire, and not in a good way. Like, in terms of property taxes, sales taxes, income taxes, we are worse off than New Hampshire in terms of tax rates. And when we're comparing ourselves to New England, that's not company we want to keep in the Midwest, right? I think everyone would appreciate that New England is probably traditionally one of the higher taxed areas of the country. What I would suggest, we have to somehow find, and I know, Commissioner Dennis, you made some great comments about the meeting yesterday and maybe ways forward, but the assumption from the city is the fact that if they can do nothing, the county then has the ability to somehow pull the reins back on the appraiser. Clearly not true, because we can only do it every four years, but there has to be some mechanism, there has to be some lever pull that we can do to help quell the overzealousness of these appraisers, because, like I said, this is not an infinite well, and at some point, we are going to start pricing people, myself included, out of our homes. I think, finally, I know Carl spoke much more diligently with better numbers on the challenges that we have in front of us, and I would do, I would want to say thank you to you for doing the hard work, and there are obviously great initiatives going on in the city of Wichita, and I appreciate all of that, but we have to make some tough decisions because it's impacting me to the point where there's things I can't do for the city of Wichita, things I want to put my money towards that I can't because I'm just getting eaten alive by property taxes. But we have to make some tough decisions, because it's impacting me to the point where there's things I can't do for the city of Wichita, things I want to put my money towards that I can't, because I'm just getting eaten alive by property taxes. And the last thing I'll say is thank you to everyone who's here today. It was a little bit frustrating for me. Obviously, being an Air Force veteran and going all around the world, I never had a chance to really get involved in the city community. I'm finally doing that now. And I was slightly frustrated yesterday, when I received this letter in the mail. And I'm like, clearly, there's going to be an outcry. There should be the pitchforks and torches going out, because no one could be happy about this right now. And there were less people at that city meeting than there are today. And I think this is even less. Like, how, so I'm a little bit frustrated at my civilian population, so that, my peers, that we're not more involved in maybe leaning a little bit more on our elected officials to help fight this tax fight. Great things that our tax money is going to, I'm not opposed to that, but help us to pull the reins on these appraisers and get this back under control, because this is not sustainable. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you, sir. And thanks for your service, and glad you relocated back here. We've got a comment or a question. Commissioner Howe.
Well, again, thank you, Chairman. Thank you for being here today, and thank you for your service, first of all. And I did listen to that meeting yesterday, and I heard a lot of things that were just factually untrue. And so it's frustrating to me. I echo some of the words that Commissioner Dennis shared earlier. I wanted to wait till the budget discussion to bring some of this up. You actually said just a minute ago something, I don't want to parse words with you, but you said something, actually, I would like to just correct slightly. You said the city says they can't change the mill levy. Well, you said, or the only choice they, I'm not sure if that's what you said, you said.
I think the quote for yesterday was that the city has no mechanism, there's no mechanism for the city to address over appraisals by the appraiser.
Right.
And while that may be slightly true, the fact is, they can offset it by lowering their mill levy. They have mechanisms.
So that comment you just made, I wanted to clarify. As Carl Peter John just shared a minute ago, and I clarified with him, we don't set the mill levy, they don't set the mill levy, but we do pass a budget. And the county clerk then calculates a mill levy that generates the money. So it's very technical. And so when someone says, we don't set the mill levy, or we can't set the mill levy, understand, it's really the same discussion. We pass a budget, we know how to calculate the mill levy. So whether we pass the mill levy or pass a budget, it's really just semantics at that point, because we know how that works together, okay? It's a very simple formula. Second of all, to the point that we have no control over the appraiser, that is absolutely true. One of the commissioner, one of the council members yesterday questioned whether or not the county commission actually has authority over the county appraiser. It's just, the reality is, we have none. In fact, it would be unethical, if not illegal, for us to do so. We don't have any way to tell him what to do. It's interesting, though, Carl Peter John did mention yesterday that the state does an assessment on the appraiser each and every year. And every year, I've been a commissioner, that's going back a time now, the county appraiser has been undervaluing property outside our limits. He has a plus or minus 5% limit, or should I say 10% limit. He's supposed to evaluate property between 90% to 100% of its fair market value. Every time they do the sales ratio study, this last year is another example. Came in at 74.6 or 76.4%, about 25% below market. What does that mean? That means that, on average, he's undervaluing property in Sedgwick County. And he actually stated, one of the reasons they tend to do that, they're very concerned about overvaluing property, because it creates a lot of appeals. So they tend to, they try to target that lower number if they can. So that 90% number is what they target. And they overdid that effort, and as a consequence, they undervalued property. To the point, the PVD actually sends out a report and says, you're actually out of compliance. So they have to dial in, if you will, a correction. I'm saying this very high level here, but at the end of the day, the county appraiser is certified by the state. He appraises valuations according to state law, and we have no control over what he does. So those are all truths. And the state actually puts there, they actually watch what he does and measure his performance. If he's in compliance or out of compliance, they're the ones that deal with that. So.
The 74%, that's an average.
An average, in other words, on average, he's undervaluing homes in Sedgwick County, on average of about 25%.
Okay, well.
That was before they made corrections this year.
The $74,000, they tried to increase my property value this year, would account for the other side of that. There must be someone who's really dropping.
And if that's true, sir, I surely hope that you made an appeal.
Absolutely.
And about 50% of those appeals are adjusted by the appraiser, because they make mistakes, and they're human. They're not perfect. It is somewhat subjective on that part of it. Most of what they do is actually not subjective, but there's a portion of it that is. And so because of that, they can actually make a mistake. We want our citizens to have due process and make an appeal to this objective part of what they do. And sometimes, about half the time, they make adjustments to those numbers. At the end of the day, once it's all said and done, whether people get adjustments or not, there's a point when we get that certified assessed value for Sedgwick County, or every jurisdiction gets their notification from the appraiser, here's the assessed value of your jurisdiction. We assume all those appeals that are needed have been processed up to that point, and that's how we build our budget. It is based on the assumption that that process is fair. And in fact, the state constitution uses words, "uniform and equal", which is a really good point, because the state's going to tinker with the constitutional amendment next year, it sounds like, to try to tinker with the appraisal process, try to wait, to put the thumb on local government's right to govern, pass a budget as we need to. So rather than simply let that process, which arguably today is based on something outside of us, is based on fair market value of homes in the real estate market. If they're going to tinker with that and start adjusting, if you will, what the appraiser can do by law, capping what he can do, then you disconnect the housing market from, you disconnect the appraisal process from the housing market. And that disconnection creates a uniform and unequal process. So I'm very concerned about that. The end of the day, to get a handle on our tax growth, which we're here concerned about, the only thing we can do is cut our budget. And that's what Wichita can do as well. So to them, throw their hands up and say, we have no choice here. And by the way, they captured 100% of the assessed value growth in their budget they passed. Record level, highest number of mill levy in the history of Wichita, that I can find, going back 30 years, as they mentioned. It's not flat, it's gone up a couple of mils. End of the day, they had a choice. They could have cut the budget, and they didn't do so. So that's how they get the mill levy lowered, is by reducing their budget. Same as what we can do here today, potentially. So I appreciate, you're sounding like a very smart guy. If you want to hear tax talk, I'll meet with you privately, I'll meet with you over coffee, or get a gathering together. I love talking about taxes. I hate taxes, but I love talking about taxes. So please, let's get educated, let's understand how it all works. The end of the day, I don't see there's a lot of opportunity in Sedgwick County to substantially change our mill levy. By the way, we're going to tinker today with potentially a quarter of a mil, maybe half a mil. We'll have that discussion at some point here. Let me explain, a quarter mil reduction on a $100,000 house is $2.88 per year. And we're going to, hopefully.
I'll take it.
I'll buy your coffee, it'd be the same to you, I suppose. But anyway, no, I agree. You know, it sounds like, almost futile. By the way, one mil in Sedgwick County for their entire jurisdiction generates $6.418 million. So on one side, it generates a lot of money that we need to pay our staff with, to make sure we have enough 911 professionals, to make sure we have enough sheriff's deputies, and on it goes. And most of that money is used for staff salaries, primarily for infrastructure, public works, and public safety. That's where almost all the money goes. And all this entire increase this year, $15.1 million, is going to enhance the salaries for those people, because we have to have people to deliver services. If we don't pay them, then guess what? You don't get the services that you demand or that you want.
And I don't disagree.
That's the challenge.
Like I said, great initiatives going on in Sedgwick.
So.
On this end, it's a death by a thousand cuts, right?
I understand that.
Even the smallest increases matter.
And I probably can go on, but here's one of my points, is that, you know, I don't think Sedgwick County actually is the biggest problem on your tax. Look at the R and R statement, and see where your money is actually going. And I'll show you some data to show that Sedgwick County is actually really efficient and really effective. I'm very impressed with what we've gotten to. I don't know how it's sustainable, that's my biggest concern. And if we want to continue to cut, if we want to cut our budget this year, you're going to have to give up some public safety, you're going to have to give up some infrastructure, you're going to have to give up some quality of life stuff. And I don't think this community has a desire to do those types of things. One of the other problems, I'll move on here. One of the other problems we see is, there's a mentality, not by you, I don't think you're guilty of this at all, but by a lot of people who think the government simply sits on piles of cash, we're being mean, we can provide services without taxes. The end of the day, we have to balance this budget. We can only provide services if we tax the people that we serve. We're not here to control the people, we're here to serve the people, we're here to provide services that people demand and want. We want to do that with the smallest amount of tax revenue as possible. The question is, well, maybe we're there. And if we are there, then what do you want to cut? And that's the challenge we have today, is I have dug into this budget so hard, I don't know what I'm going to do in terms of passing this budget or not. I still don't know, I'm on the fence. There's things I want to see cut in this budget. But at the end of the day, there's not $15 million worth of cuts available. Chairman mentioned on the radio just yesterday, we only have about $20 million worth of discretionary spending. Think about this, out of a $546 million budget, only about $20 million of that really is truly discretionary. And that discretionary spending is spent for things like Sedgwick County Zoo. I don't think people want us to cut the zoo, and on it goes. And so there's really not a lot of opportunities for us to cut $15 million out of this budget. So I sympathize with everything you've said today. I'm frustrated, too. And there is things out there. One of the things we can do as a state is, we can lower the property tax dependency. If the state would step up and fund their programs that are, by law, required to fund. And I'm sure that we have someone in the audience, I think is going to bring this up when she speaks, or later on today. But anyway, there is things we can do. And please have me for a tax talk, or let's sit down one-on-one, I should love to show you the rest of my data, okay?
Thanks, Chairman.
Thank you so much.
Okay, and Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Might want to stay handy, just in case. Commissioner Dennis has a question or comment.
First of all, Mr. Guerin, thank you very much for your service, we appreciate it. Commissioner Howe and I are both Air Force veterans.
Thank you for your service.
We know what your service meant to our nation. I agree with everything Commissioner Howe said, but I'm going to try and use Cliff Notes version of it, okay? First thing I want to mention is that our appraiser is getting a lot of bad publicity right now, I think, in my mind. Our appraiser is just like every other employee in Sedgwick County, is that they're doing their job for our community. And I keep hearing that they're not doing their job. And I guarantee you that they are, because we get briefed on it every year. They have a requirement by PVD, again, they work for PVD, not for us, but your appraisal has to be between 90% and 110% of what the actual value of that house is. And every time that they brief us, and they bring a briefing to us at the beginning of each year, they're down around the 90% or lower, and they get in trouble when they're below that. So the question you need to ask is, would you sell your house for what the appraiser says it's worth? If you would, maybe it is overpriced, okay? If you, and at that point, you need to appeal it, if it's overpriced. And we have a process for appealing it, appraiser does. If you wouldn't sell it for that, maybe you're at the 90% level. I want to let you know what my concerns are, though, of the future, because the value keeps going up. And what I saw when I was stationed at Mount Fremont in Montana, I had a number of friends that owned property around Flathead Lake, and I don't know if you've ever been up in that area, but it was all settled, you know, 125, 130 years ago. And it's been in the same family for years, and all the California people found out about it, and they moved in, and the prices went sky high. And all of the people that owned the property and the families for 100 years or so now couldn't afford it anymore, and they're selling it to the people that are moving in from California. I hate to see that happen, I saw it happen up there. So we do have to find ways to keep the values, so that they're reasonable, so that they don't impact not only the veterans, but everybody in the community. Today, what you're going to hear is that there is a motion that's going to be made, and I'm not sure which one, there's three of them sitting here right now, to lower our mill levy. And I don't know how many other organizations are doing it, I think Derby may have done it. If you look, Commissioner Howe made the point a little while ago, that the state taxes you for 21.5 mils, and they don't even have an R and R here. And if you look at your little sheet there, you're going to see a 1.5 going to the state, and a 20 mil, it looks like it's going to the school district, but it's going to the state. So Sedgwick County is the lowest mill levy, the county. I'm only talking about the county, because that's the only thing we have control over. Sedgwick County is the second lowest in the entire state. In Johnson County, we can't compete against them because of their assessed value. So I appreciate you being here today. But we still have to provide services with over 40 departments. Most of everything we do, as was mentioned, only about $20 million is discretionary. So how can we cut those? I hate to be the bearer of bad news. I feel for you, and I feel for everybody today. But we still have a mission, just as you had a mission when you were in the Air Force. And we have to meet that mission and provide services to the community. But thanks, sir, for being here.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Okay, no other questions? Just for those in the audience, we have three more speakers, and due to the time, we will, after the speakers, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll take a 10-minute break, and then we'll come back for the next. So that's what we've got going on. Next speaker is Brett Anderson. Brett, welcome to the commission meeting.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Brett Anderson, address is 844 West 54th Street North. I'll make it quick here. I had one concern about the budget for the election office. What I see is, they are asking for a $1.5 million increase over the prior year. They go through, and they give you the big, significant adjustments that they're asking for. Their significant ask come to $9.5 million, or $950,000. My question is, from looking from this sheet, where does the other $500,000 to $600,000 go? I can't see it, maybe it's something that, I don't know what I'm looking at, maybe looking for clarification. I don't see it. I would like to see a better breakdown of that. Second of all, it is a concern, I know that there was a prior ask for a mail-in ballot, for a mail-in ballot flyer. And you guys spoke about this at a prior meeting, over is it a reminder for your date to get your mail-in ballot? Or is it a mail-in ballot application itself? If it's a mail-in ballot application itself, I would highly urge you guys to not fund that part of the budget. You have a right to vote, but you also have responsibilities that go with that, right? Not everyone in the county needs a mail-in ballot application. So that's all I got.
Thank you, Brett. Any questions, comments? I don't see any. Thanks again, Brett. Next up is Sean Horsem. Horsham? Hi, Sean. Yeah, I'm sorry about.
That's okay. That's how I know when the telemarketers call.
Well.
All right, well, thank you for allowing me to speak. I appreciate the opportunity to do so, with respect and human dignity to everybody, because we need a lot more of that in this society. So thank you. I want to start off by saying, I don't envy your jobs on doing all the budgets and all those things. I do those at work, and it's hard enough there, let alone the scale that you do it. I'm fairly familiar with how taxes work, and I agree 100% what they go for, you know, with our police, our security, and all the schools. And I understand we have to fund those issues, or those obligations, and take care of our public, and we want to grow. So I say this with that in mind. However, if I look at my proposed budget, over, if I take 2023 and the last two years, the assessed value and the appraisal values of my properties went up 30%. Okay, that's 10% average per year. Most of your cost of living adjustments from the companies that pay you your wages, you know, at least for me, don't go up 10% per year. You know, I'm a father with a wife that is not able to work. I've got two teenagers and a kid, and we all know what the weight of inflation has been, and all the economy, and all the stuff that we all have to suffer with. You know, we're average around 20%, 22%, probably cost a good soul just to buy groceries and, you know, keep things going for kids. I don't mind paying my fair share of taxes, never have. I know that's how the government works, and that's how we do everything we do. However, 10% increase on those appraised values a year is quite excessive to me. If I look at, even if you do revenue neutral, which according, revenue neutral to me is kind of a vague statement, because it's not really revenue neutral, it's a revenue increase, because if your value goes up, you're still increasing the amount of money you're paying, so it's not really neutral to me, it's, you're still paying more money. On the front of your, the flyer that goes out, that says, when property values increase, that does not necessarily mean more property taxes will be assessed. While the last nine property taxes have been assessed, only one of them has barely went down. So pretty much, it means taxes are going to go up. I don't really care for the defense of, well, if we have to figure out a way to lower that budget, we automatically got to cut salaries and services to our critical functions as a defense, because there's a lot of things that go into that budget. At my own house, I make sure my critical things are taken care of, my utilities, my infrastructure, things that need to be repaired, food on the table, but I don't go put a swimming pool in. You know, maybe I'm not repainting the house, maybe we're not replacing a road, while inconvenient, you know, it's a need to repair a road that's damaged, not necessarily a need to rebuild an entire section, if that makes sense. You know, it's nice, because we want it, but maybe some of these projects can be postponed a little bit to bring down the property tax value, or where our taxes are going. a little bit to bring down the property tax value, or the, where our taxes are going. Because if I look at my current year, even if I stay revenue neutral, I have a 6% increase in my taxes. If we go with your proposed budget, that's a 14% increase in taxes. And I know it may not seem a lot, you know, $400, $500 to me, or on this bill just for me is not much money in the grand scheme of things, but that's, you know, a month's worth of utilities on a single income, and it's just very difficult. And I know we all struggle with that. I'm not saying don't increase the taxes. It probably does need to go up somewhere between the R and R rate and the proposed budget, but can we at least make it more reasonable, where it's not a 14% increase? Because it's 14% here, and a death by 1,000 cuts everywhere else. Just ask it to be reasonable. I want to pay our firefighters and police, that's not the debate, but that's, that's not, to me, that's not all the things that are considered in a budget. And I would just ask that you guys consider that for the average Joe trying to make it, you know, to kind of help out a little bit. That's it. And I really appreciate the time to be up here and address. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Beatty.
Thank you, sir, for, for coming and spending the time and listening through these things and sharing your opinion. It is very critical that these conversations are happening in our community, that we understand that from the county side of things, our 20% to 25% a year tax bill, that we are doing the best we can to be a good steward over that. You talk about cuts to budget and so forth. There were 46 departments that presented since February to, that's the point, presenting what we call decision packages and such, things that they need that are critical. Infrastructure needs, some of that is paint, some of these new stations, these are vehicles, these are big things that are necessary that these department heads believe to help perform service in this community. $18 million of those packages came before us, and I don't know, I think we turned down, actually, there was more, I think there was more, like $20 million of packages. I think we turned down 18 of the 20 million. So nearly all that we're doing in this budget that is going to exceed any revenue neutral rate is going to go to salary and wages and compensation. So I can tell you that it wasn't that long ago at the county, because I've only been here eight months, and I remember it was six, seven, eight years ago, when there was actually political campaigns and things that were talking about quit the cuts here at Sedgwick County Government, that they had depleted and cut to the best they could to make sure that we are lean and efficient at Sedgwick County Government. I took this job with the same approach that you're taking this, like, we need to protect the taxpayer. And I can tell you, after eight months of studying this, this process and looking at this budget book after the last really better part of a month and a half, there's not a whole lot here we can cut anymore. Sedgwick County Government really is lean. It really is efficient in many regards, and we've got to stabilize our staffing so we can form better government service. The opportunity, moving forward from this budget, isn't going to be in how much we can cut, because there's really, we'd be cutting bone. And I know that's what a lot of families are doing. But the opportunity is, there's areas where we can reform, that we can anchor into our core services, but what's not core services, we can consolidate, we can partner, we can collaborate better. That is opportunity. Less than 4% of this budget is discretionary, and it's in those places where we really have some movement that we can go with partnerships moving forward. That's what's coming next outside of this budget. This budget is about doing the best we can to take the recommended budget and protect taxpayers the best we can while still balancing our capacity to perform good government service, particularly in public safety. So I pray you know, man, that, that everything you said resonates deeply with everyone up here that's making decisions, and all of our staff that are building these recommended budgets. And it's going to be a healthy conversation later today, but you are not unheard. I promise you, you're not unheard, and we understand that these are big decisions. So thank you for coming and sharing.
Well, I appreciate that, Mr. Ryan. You know, hearing that the entry level for the firefighters was only at 15 something an hour was pretty disheartening, considering the amount of things that they do to put their life on the line. So I'm glad you all were able to correct that and make those adjustments. Again, I want those people, you know, from school teachers up to everybody that risks their lives for us, it's, it's better to pay them, you know, the ways they need so they can provide for their families. I just wanted to be heard on the frustrations that, you know, we're all feeling.
And you are.
Thank you, sir.
And Commissioner Howell.
Chairman, is it Sean, right?
Yes, sir.
What's your last name again?
Horstman.
Horstman, thank you. I want to make sure I had that right.
That's all right.
I wanted to, to also reflect on, out of our $546 million budget today, right at one-third of that is property tax. Two-thirds of that is other sources, is fee funds, it's grants primarily, there's a lot of grant money in there. Again, grant money comes with strings attached, so you have to use the money specifically for the thing that we receive the money for. We can't use grant funds to build a bridge, for example, it is not allowed. So property tax is primarily funded, three areas of our budget. A lot of our human services are funded through grants, but primarily, our property tax funds go to public safety, infrastructure, and the one that's probably the most difficult for us is the issue of quality of life. And I'm looking at a list here in front of me that talks about some of our quality of life spending. Some of this is, this is where discretionary spending comes from. We provide money to Sedgwick County Zoo, just under $9 million. That's like a third rail of Sedgwick County. I don't think we ought to be touching that too much. I think that I learned that back in 2015. We talked, we had a discussion, not fun. Which Arts Commission, we get $15,000, Riverfest, $10,000, Historic Museum, $90,000, the Kansas African American Museum gets $262,000. Mediation Center gets $8,000. Oklaun Transit, I'm very fond of providing transportation for Oklaun. I have a heart for Oklaun, I think they need help, but that transportation program subsidy to get Wichita to go to Oklaun, provide some services there is $38,000. Crime Prevention, $582,000. None of those. These are areas where we could cut those things we want to. Exploration Place, $2.2 million. We want to cut in our budget, that's where we have to go. I think people want us to take care of our bridges and roads. We don't want to have deferred maintenance. I mean, there are some jurisdictions, some of them not too far from where we sit right now, today, that have not taken care of their infrastructure the way they should, and it gets more expensive as time goes on if you don't take care of that when you should. And I'll just tell you, Sedgwick County has tremendous, thank you, Lynn, Lynn Packer, because we have a public works that has done a tremendous job taking care of our infrastructure. I look at other counties around us across the state, especially, you look at state roads, township roads, city roads, really, our infrastructure is in great shape. We're not overdoing it. We're, in fact, we're, I think we're very judicious on what we, what we repair, but we're taking care of our infrastructure that the taxpayers own. We do it at the right time, so it saves taxpayer money if we don't do it right then. So Public Works is doing a good job, and public safety, things like tornado sirens, emergency management, the jail, we fund our courts, we fund the election office, obviously. We have to fund things that frankly, we don't have a lot of choice over. And so that stuff really is kind of almost off-budget. We have to, we have to fund those things to satisfy the state that we're funding those things adequately. So it comes right down to discretion. You mentioned a minute ago, the revenue neutral rate, you said even if we went to the revenue neutral rate, you still have an increase. So the reason that is, if I understand correctly, the revenue neutral rate for us is a jurisdictional theoretical cap for us. It says, we want to lower the mill levy to this level so we don't get more money, but on individual basis, some properties increased more in value than the average, some increased less than the average. And so if we did go to the R and R mill levy rate, which is a pretty good cut for us, about $15 million cut to our proposed budget here. If we did do that, then, again, the reason you would have a tax increase is because your, your valuation went up faster than the average. That's why that would happen. So my question to people in your situations, was your property undervalued before? Is it correct today? Is it, would it sell for the prop, for the price the appraiser said it would sell? Again, he's targeting fair market value. Do you believe he's overvalued your property? I certainly hope that you made an appeal to have that adjusted down. And if, and if he's correct, if you guys agree this is the proper value, then you talk about fair share taxation. That's what that is. I don't like property taxes, but we go right down to what is fair. We, we tax people theoretically on a fair method. We, we agree on valuations, and once that's done, then it comes down to fairness. Everyone gets taxed based on the value of their, of their assessed, their assessed value according to the appraiser after the appeals process is complete. So, again, I still think we should find some places to trim in here. It's going to be very challenging, but the revenue neutral rate, the reason yours is up is because your property went up faster than the average. If that makes any sense.
Well, I would, I understand what you're saying on that, but here's what I want to say. I'm not selling my house. I don't intend to sell my house. God forbid he makes move again. Please don't do that to me, Lord, because I won't, you know, then he'll say, "You're moving." But I'm not selling my house. I'm not pocketing that money. And if I did, I have to buy a house that's overinflated in price anyway. And I understand the paying for the goods and services we have. I'm also paying for braces and a broken arm and medical expenses and counseling for my kids, all the stuff that they're having to go through. I'm having to pay for therapy for my wife, for myself, you know, those are my expenses on my level. So yes, I understand you guys are looking at your picture up there. I'm also looking at my picture that I'm paying 14% more in taxes for, for these things. It seems unreasonable to increase that much. And I understand everything's went up, but my worry and concern is paying for my family and making sure they pay for theirs. I get it, but not at a 14% jump. You know, to me, that's unreasonable to expect. So, you know, I appreciate being heard, but, you know, what you, the problems you're telling me, the problems you're telling me that you're dealing with are the problems we're dealing with as families.
Did you make an appeal?
Yes.
And was it adjusted?
I don't know yet.
You don't know yet, okay. Well, again, it sounds like maybe yours was overvalued. In that case, you're, you are paying too much, and so I certainly hope you get that adjusted, if that's the case.
Okay.
Thank you again for, for coming to us today. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else?
Don't see any others.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. And our last person that signed up to address us is Pastor Rosemary. Pastor Rosemary? While she's coming up, I wanted to make a comment to follow up on the, on the David Garen, you're the first, is very, actually, thank you, everybody, been very respectful and very patient and good dialogue. But I received a message from staff that there's a great YouTube summary, or the review of our appraiser's office and the evaluation process. So it's on YouTube. I could do the, you know, P23Y, our, our thing, but Nicole, can we make sure we post that prominently for the, because it was a great, it's the, it's the appraiser meeting, they, they show a lot of data and show a lot of the process, what their flexibility is or not, which is very minimal, the rules that they have to abide by, by the state mandated directions. So it's a really, if I recall, that meeting was very good. I think with this discussion, based on yesterday at the city as well as today, we should have that appraiser. So I just want to let you know that. And we actually have your email address, so Nicole, maybe we can actually send it directly to Mr. Garen at least, and then we'll post it. So, okay, just comment. All right. Back to Pastor Rosemary. You have five minutes to name and address, and you have five minutes to address us.
Thank you so much. I have something that I want to give you. Can I walk there, or can I get a helper?
She'll get it.
Okay. Great, thank you so much. When you give, give, give each one of that, like that. Yes, they love, they love copies. I'll be there. Hold on to them. And this one, I do love, I love copies of them, but I don't want to. Thank you so much.
Okay. Please proceed.
Thank you.
Okay.
I thank the council, I mean, the commissioners here, thank you. I thank the city manager, I thank all the staff who are here, I thank all the public who are here. My name is Pastor Rosemary Joroge, and don't let my accent fool you. I've been here in this city for over 50 years, and I have raised kids who have graduated from high school and college, and I have worked, I used to work for Interfaith Ministries for years and years from its foundation to the time where it has now gone into a transition as human service provider. And they also sent me out of this city of Wichita to represent the city of Wichita and the state of Kansas into, as an election monitor in South Africa. So I've had a global experience right from here. And I, and so I just want to request that you look at the, the CD that I have provided, because it is the one that made me change my mind from speaking as a public, in the public area, but to show you that this CD reminded me that I, when I came here, the first time I came here for this meeting, and I wasn't able to, I was asking for a million-dollar funding, but the, the moment I saw this CD, this is me and my little boy, my grandson, son, his mother died here through domestic violence. And for, for, for him and I to survive, and his uncle, who was 10 years old, whom he called Uncle Dad today, for them to survive, and for Uncle Dad and my grandson, and for me to, to survive with both of them, we needed all of your prayers and support. And so today, we have come up with a project that will give back to all those peoples, families and friends who helped us during that healing domestic violence time. And so this project that I am requesting to you today, a funding of 300,000 instead of a million-dollar funding, and it's because I realized that this CD, the reason why we haven't been able to raise that money that we are coming to ask you, is because we didn't have the selling ability for it. We don't, we did not have access, for example, to the media to tell the people that God heals all wounds, he has healed us, he can heal them, and this CD really encouraged them. And so we realized that you have access to the media, and also we are, I'm sure, meeting and he being had by many media outrates, and, and know that we will be able to get that kind of an access, and we'll get to be able to sell our CDs. I have also written a book called The Day I Died and Went to Heaven, and it's a true story. I know to most people say, yeah, that is impossible, but I did, I went, I died, went to heaven and came back by God's grace. And so today, the program that we are asking you to help us for is called Unaffordable University of Life Training Facility. And this training is not only a training, it's an income generating training program. It is an income generating program, because we'll be doing catering within the training facility, not only for our students, but for the public, we'll be having affordable dinners. And so we will be training people in vocational training, but before we train them, we will be gathering them for a month, gathering all their experiences that they have worked, for example, in manual reba, maybe in daycare centers, maybe in housekeeping, and they, those skills, we will equivalent them to professional experience, and they will be able to find jobs. And so that is really what we, we are doing in this. We will be, we will have a gym, we will have a daycare center that will be generating income and affording very needed services. And so, and we'll be serving very low-income.
Pastor Rosemary, your five minutes is up. Can you wrap it up?
And, and, and.
Because it's.
To, to, to wrap it up is that we will have also music competitions and, and music training programs, and also selling those CDs in all those programs.
All right. Are there any questions for Pastor Rosemary? I don't see any. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll bring the discussion back to bench. Manager wanted to make a couple of comments.
Chairman, thank you. As we conclude public comment, I want to bring to the commission's attention, we did have an online service for budget comment, and there were four comments made through this mechanism. Two are in support of elections, one was in an, for an increase of pay for van drivers, and one was in general opposition of tax increase. So just for your awareness.
Okay, so those were the online comments as well. Okay. All right, so at this time, we will close the, the public comment on this, speaking to this issue, to this, and we will, is there any other comments or questions from the bench before we make a motion? I don't see any. I'm sorry.
We need to make a motion to receive and file.
Okay, oh yeah, I'll make a motion to receive and file. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Okay, and now we go to the revenue, revenue neutral rate resolution motion. Okay, and now we go to the revenue, revenue neutral rate resolution motion, uh, any comments or questions before I make the motion? I don't see any, I move that we adopt the resolution to levy a property tax exceeding the revenue neutral rate for the 2024 Cedric County Budget. Second. There's motion in a second, any discussion on that? Commissioner Howe.
Just a point of clarification, so if we make adjustments to the budget after this is passed, um, does this number change potentially in what we need to levy? Or Matt, we're establishing a maximum mill levy at this point with this motion. If we trim anything out of the.
This, this motion just says exceeds the revenue neutral rate, there's not, not a number in there yet. Lindsey, can you?
Commissioner Lindsey Poursel, your CFO, um, we, this is all, all this is saying is that the levy that you intend to pass through budget adoption, um, is greater than what the real revenue neutral rate is, it's not tied to a specific dollar amount, and so it should be, even if you were to, let's say, pass a levy that was $15 million less, um, this still would not bind you to anything, it's just saying that now this is what you do after this hearing.
Very good, well, I, just to, I guess to explain my vote, again, I, I think that to live, to live under the R and R is not, it's not rational, it doesn't make sense at all. I, I think that someone said, between that number and what's been proposed is, that's kind of like the ends of the spectrum here, we ought to be somewhere in the middle, and I agree with that, so I think it's, we'll do due diligence to find places to trim if we can, but, um, to live under the, uh, revenue neutral rate, which would cut 15.118 million dollars out of this budget is, I don't think it's possible, so I hate to say that, so I have to buy, to be fair, I have to vote for this, so thank you, Chairman.
Okay, there's a motion in a second, any other comments? I don't see any, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Okay, that motion carries, we're going to end up going, closes item H, but if, out of respect to everybody, let's take a 10-minute break, and we will be back at, uh, 11:40, according to the atomic clock up there. Thank you.
Okay, stand by, we'll get started in a few seconds. Here we go in ten, nine, eight, seven.
Test, test, here we go, everybody, we're coming back live. Three, two, one, here we are. Okay, thank you, everybody, I appreciate the chance that we take a quick break and we are back to the Board of County Commission meeting. Madam Kirk, next item, please.
Item I, adoption of the 2024 Cedric County Budget and Capital Improvement Program.
Okay, Manager Stoltz.
Good morning again, Commissioner Tom Stoltz, County Manager's Office. Now, we are at the item of budget discussion and hopefully ultimate adoption. This finishes a process that, as you well know, started back in February of this year with a budget retreat and discussion. During that discussion time, the Commission made clear to staff five overall goals. One was to continue stabilization of county staff by addressing compensation, work environment, and training. Two was some strategic staffing modifications in specific areas and elections and Appraiser's Office was mentioned during the retreat. Three was maintain capital improvement projects, enhancing infrastructure and keeping up properties to the best of our ability. Four was a continued commitment to mental health. And five was do all this and no mill levy increase because we all understood what the valuations were going to do. As we move forward through this, the first item we tackled as a staff was employee compensation. Just to summarize, this is the third year in a row now we have looked at employee compensation. And during the 2022 budget discussion, HR rolled forward a very aggressive reclassification, redefinition of jobs project, which resulted in some compensation adjustment. During the 2023 budget discussion of our current year that we're in, we did an analysis and came up with unique pay plans for areas of the county that were critically understaffed, such as EMS and corrections and 911, came back with individual pay plans for them, and also put fire and EMS back on the step plan. And then this year, we partnered with Evergreen to do a general compensation study for the remaining 1,400 employees that are in county government service that were not addressed in the specific pay plans. The Evergreen adjustment is part of this recommended budget, it's to the tune of about $7 million more. And if this budget in any way, shape, or form is adopted today regarding compensation, it will have meant that the Commission over the last three years will have increased or addressed compensation to a level of roughly $46 million. It's a significant paradigm shift in county government services the last several years. In addition to the Evergreen implementation, we're recommending for step staff today, which is the sheriff and EMS, because fire has been handled differently by the Commission in the meeting previous to this, is to give the sheriff and EMS their step raises, which is five for the sheriff and three for EMS, plus a 2% pay scale adjustment, and a 3% general adjustment for all other employees within the county. That is the recommendation for compensation. In regards to working environment, which was brought up during retreat, we have a 2024 Facility Capital Improvement Plan of 6.6 million, which contains a myriad of items such as roofs and building conditions. We have a lot of facility in the county, and we want our employees to be safe. We want our citizens, when they come into those buildings, to feel welcome and safe, and it should be clean and presentable. So all of those monies are designated toward enhancing our buildings. We have placed into this recommended budget another $1 million for mental health contingency, the same as we had in the 2023 budget, so the Commission has flexibility and maneuverability on whatever we see in the future regarding that initiative. And then we were very strategic in our position additions, some of which we've talked about. Three for the elections, Commission Office, that's in this particular budget. Two in the Appraiser's Office, neither of those is what they asked for. And we left a lot of asks out on the table because there's two parts to a budget. One is to provide service and one is to be responsible to our payers, correct? Two FTEs, and I mentioned this already, and two Fire District One. One FTE to emergency 911 communications. In addition to, in this recommended budget, new consoles for the backup site and monies for a radio analysis and study comprehensively done by a third-party outside vendor. One position for Regional Forensic Science Center and one position for EMS, plus an organizational change for EMS that will allow them to go to a two-paramedic system, which is what Chief Landerman and his staff had requested. As been mentioned, we left a lot on the table that staff had asked for. We tried to throughout this process, then with the Commission, I thank the Commission for joining us in this. We're trying to balance service, what we have to provide the community with. And we're seeing increasing demands in the public safety sector, in the court sector, in mental health. So we try to provide that balance of service, but there's a responsibility and accountability to taxpayer of this community. So we tried to balance that as best we could through this recommended budget. I think we're almost there. I know we want to have conversation about a little bit of fine tuning, and Lindsay is here to... Or I, or Lorian, are available, or we have staff here to address any questions that you may have on the budget. So Chairman, I'll turn it back to you.
Okay, any preliminary conversation as we... Okay, so we are moving into the actual budget discussion here. I'm reminded that to the Commission that if we make any changes from the recommended budget, those changes need to be voted on. So just as before we approve the final budget, each change, correct?
Yes, sir.
And also, while they're getting ready, if we do have some significant changes, there may be a quick break, so a motion can be perfected reflecting those changes. We do have a few motions in front of us based on our previous open meetings and transparent meetings about some ideas. So there are some motions in front of us, but if we end up having one, we will take a small break to make sure legal and finance, we can make a proper motion. Okay, so you want to introduce Lorian's gadgets and gidgets?
Yes, our gadgets and gidgets. So for the record, I'm Lindsay Poursot, CFO, Lorian Showalter-Ary, Budget Director is up here with me. What you have up on your screen right now is a tool that we've historically used called Levy Live. And what it allows us to do is as you all make motions, we type them out into this. We are able to then show you what the fiscal impact is either to the budget or to the forecast. And then we track that as to whether the Commission votes to approve or not. And this kind of becomes our final document that we use within finance when we create an adopted budget in November to make sure that we capture the changes that you want. So if you want to make specific motions, we're happy to type those in. Otherwise, there may be a few blanket motions that are written and we'll just give a holistic impact and type that in. So that's what this is. Just a reminder, you all have already approved a last update agenda item, which means that the overall amount of budget authority and the overall property tax levy cannot increase without us going back through this whole process, and please, please, please don't make us do that. We also, though, can reduce the mill levy rate. That will decrease the amount of revenue that goes into the budget. As we've talked about in your staff meeting, actually yesterday, if you make some of those changes, it will require a reduction in overall budget authority, and we will need direction on where to do that. Otherwise, we can simply move budget authority between departments or between contingencies without changing the overall total of the budget. So I think those are kind of the ground rules, did I miss anything? Okay, so give us your best or your worst, I suppose.
Okay, Lindsay, thanks for explaining. And I think Commissioner Beatty, it's the first time he sees how this works live, so I bet it's also a good refresher for the rest of us. So we will churn through it.
Let's go.
So there's really no particular order other than when you put your light on and we'll recognize it and discuss and move in. Okay, first up is, you would never guess it, it's Commissioner Hal.
Is that a joke? Boy, well, okay.
A friendly joke.
Put that in the minutes, by the way. So, you know, this would be no surprise, I have talked with Lindsay and Tom, and we've had numerous meetings on some ideas trying to trim some things out of these budgets. First of all, let me just express my thanksgiving to Tom especially. This is a very hard job, and to bring a manager's budget that's this good to us is great work and reflects a lot of work that I have no idea, all that happened. But I know there's been a tremendous amount of hours invested by lots of people. And that obviously goes to both our CFO and our Chief of Finance, both. So thank you, all you guys do to bring this budget to us. One of my frustrations is the process, just how we got here. There's a point back several months ago where each Commissioner sat down with key staff and kind of shared our thoughts on the budget. And of course, those are private discussions, so I don't know what other Commissioners say. They don't get to hear my comments, I don't get to hear their comments. But staff kind of gleaned what they feel like is consensus amongst the five. And then that manager's budget is theoretically reflective of the majority. So when I get that budget, theoretically, we have support to pass the budget as it's presented to us when it comes to us. And so because of that process, you know, I have ideas that my colleagues may be aware of now because I brought these up in numerous staff meetings between... Over the last several months, I brought a lot of these things up, so it's no surprise maybe to my colleagues either. But to the extent the budget doesn't reflect my desires in every area, let me just say this, budgets are not moral decisions. It's not like it's, you know, it's great, or it's not like it's good or it's bad. It's degrees of, you know, it represents, if you will, the average opinion of the Commissioners. And there's always going to be things in the budget we don't like. And I don't think anybody's going to be... No one's in love with everything in this budget. So I'm going to state that upfront. Let me throw out some ideas here, and I have a motion prepared. Just a couple of things here. I don't think our website needs redesigned. Again, I go to the website every single day, I get data out of there. Is it perfect? No. Is it as good as someone else's website? Maybe not. But it does its job, and I don't think it needs to necessarily be redesigned. And so I would disagree with spending $100,000 to redesign the website. I think we're fine as is if we find dead links. By the way, even if you redesign the website, it'll still have dead links. That's a problem with every website. So that's not a reason to do this necessarily. I think this is keeping up with the Joneses type of thing. I don't know, we need to spend $100,000 on a website that redesigns, so I would disagree with that. There were several positions presented to us for the election office. One of those is the warehouse supervisor position. I would personally like to see that one not funded this year. Let's get into our new facility, hopefully. But based on what we have, you know, based on the investments we've made in the election office over the last several years, to me, this is just one, maybe one thing we can maybe put off for just a little bit longer. I'd like to have this discussion in a future budget year. And then that would... So again, that would be $71,088. And then we have two budgets, one of them in the election office, one from central services that tie to the presidential calendar, general election, I'm sorry, general election budget, excuse me. The general election in next year, okay, I said that right, definitely. But we're planning to spend, once again, quite a bit of money, add this up. It's $72,250 from the election office and $48,136 from central services together to create what's called an advance by mail. It says flyer, but really this is application, correct? So it's not just a postcard, it's an application. This goes to every single registered voter in Cedric County. In the past, going back to around mid-2000s, like 2005 or so, we dropped, I think, well, over 100 poll sites in Cedric County. And the way we did that was we added this mail ballot application. The idea back in the day was we don't have enough poll sites, and I don't know if Commissioners were just trying to cut costs or what the motivation behind that was. But if you look at other counties like Shawnee County, they have more poll sites than we do. Johnson County has vastly more poll sites than we do. I think we should have more poll sites. And in terms of the costs, it's less expensive to have more poll sites than it is to send up this advance by mail application. I'm not necessarily against a postcard to alert people there's an election coming up and how to get a mail ballot if you want. We just went through canvassing, and again, my colleagues may disagree with me, but sometimes people trust the system we present to them, and they do everything in their opinion, they did everything right. And their vote doesn't count for some reason, maybe it didn't get delivered to the election office in time. Maybe they didn't sign the correct blank on the security envelope and their ballots rejected for that reason. For whatever reason, we had, again, not quite 2%, they say a little bit less than 2% of the ballots in the last canvas were ultimately rejected. They were presented to the canvassing board and then we rejected just a little bit less than 2%. Round that off to 2% means one out of every 50 people who tried to vote, for some reason, their ballot didn't count. And that's a high number, I don't, I'm not happy with that. I think that mail ballots are something we have to have. And for people who trust that system and people who like that system or people who need a way to vote when they're not in the community, it provides great things for them. But do I think it's as good as poll site voting? I think I can make a strong argument that it's not. Because when you cast a ballot at a poll site, you know for sure your ballot was counted. So I don't support that, I do support moving money over to more poll sites. And so we'll talk about that in a second. I also like to see us eliminate $500,000 from the contractual budget authority from the economic development budget. Well, that reduces the overall general fund budget together by $791,474. And then I'd also like to see us eliminate R328, that's the Northwest Expressway funding. That's a million dollars a year that the county puts into that project. I know it's matched by the state. They put in a million dollars, we put in a million dollars. One of my concerns is I don't think my great-grandkids will see it finished. There seems to be very little support by people from the city of Wichita. And if the state really wanted to see this project move forward, they can certainly make it happen. We've invested in this program for a very long time, and I don't see it really gaining any steam. So to have that money taken out of property taxes, in my opinion, is not the best use of that money. So again, I'd like to read to my motion, Lindsay and Lorian. I would, here's my motion, I would move that we remove $100,000 of budget authority from the website redesign, remove one FTE from warehouse supervisor position and the $71,088 corresponding budget authority, remove $72,250 from the election office budget and $41,136 from the central services budget tied to advanced voting by mail application, eliminate $500,000 in contractual budget authority from the economic development budget, and reduce the overall, which will reduce the overall general fund budget by $791,474, and also move that we amend the CIP to remove Project R328 Northwest Expressway in all years. That saves $1 million per year. That's my motion. And if there's no second, I have other motions, thank you.
Okay, that was a motion of one, two, three, four, about five or six items as a collective motion. If it's seconded, that's fine, but I don't mind talking about each one of these individually as a motion. But so I'm not going to second it as a... But if anybody wants to second it, may we get a vote on that? Is there a second? Okay, I don't see any.
And just to comment back, could it be reasonable to have a motion to split the question? If someone wants to do one of these individually, that's all so far, thank you.
Okay, so I don't see any... I don't see any second. It's okay, so.
Thank you.
With that, it dies for lack of second, but we can look at any of these, or alternate motion, or any comments so far. I would want to think, before we go to maybe some other details, would we want to consider the potential of a mill levy rate first? So we may know that...
That makes good sense.
Any adjustments might be... Is it the will of the Commission to consider? Because that seems to be a lot of discussion that we've had.
And those are these three Commissioners.
Okay, all right. If it's the will, is that okay? I'm hearing nods, okay, let's go to that and then we'll return to some...
Just kidding, I lied to you, it's this one. I apologize.
It's the light blue one.
Light blue.
As a reminder...
Green, yellow, and orange are budget adoption motions.
Okay, so the light blue one. There's been discussion for the public that hasn't seen, we've talked about, we've got our regular... Our current mill levy rate is 29.30 mills. There's been discussion to reduce that. There's been discussion to reduce it a quarter mill, there's been a discussion to reduce it a half mill, and there's been a discussion to reduce it down to a flat 29, which is kind of in between. And let me also preface this by saying that we've also had, it's no secret, we've had some public discussion that about if we reduce our mill, that's a portion of your taxes, but if we were encouraging all of the taxing entities, meaning all the other, there's 20 cities in this county to maybe consider their budget, their revenue growth, which was pretty high for all of us this last year, and even the school districts and, you know, some of the cemeteries, smaller things, we didn't really do that. But I would like to, I think some of that discussion has been, and that message has been out there a little bit. And I'm just happy to report that there's eight cities in Cedric County that have either proposed or adopted a change, a lowering of their mill levy. And I just want to thank the cities of Colwich, Hayesville, Eastborough, Derby, Park City, Bel Air, Cheney, Mulvane, and Garden Plain for their efforts. And I just applaud that since we were out there. I applaud their city council members and their staff for joining in that, what we have yet to do still. But I just wanted to preface that, the other cities have either adopted one without a mill levy or without a mill levy increase and just accepted their revenue, not the revenue neutral, but their mill levy. So again, those eight cities, thank you publicly. And Commissioner Dennis?
Just briefly, and I appreciate those eight cities following the lead, I think, that we're going to do. But there are actually about 125 taxing agencies. Have you seen townships, school districts, cemetery districts? Anyone else, is it just the eight cities plus hopefully Cedric County here?
I personally have not, that doesn't mean it hasn't happened. But in the casual research that I've done, and I don't know, I think Elizabeth in the County Manager's Office did some research, I don't know that she saw any of those either. But we'll continue to keep an eye on it.
Well, at some point, if others did follow suit, I'd like to thank everyone that follows suit. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks for your comment. Yeah, Commissioner Hal?
Thank you, Chairman. I did send a PowerPoint slide to staff, I'd like to see if they maybe want to put that up before I can discuss that briefly. Again, I heard yesterday, I listened to Wichita debate their budget, and I can't remember how many times I heard them say that their mill levy has been flat for 30 years. I went back to their oldest budget they have online, which is their 2013 budget, and it showed dated back to 1997, so I captured that and thought I'd throw that on a plot for you to see. Their mill levy was a little over 31 back in 1997. Their mill levy was a little over thirty-one back in nineteen ninety-seven. It spiked up a little bit, came back down, then went back up steadily, year over year, then kind of back down, ran down to thirty point seven nine, looks like about twenty thirteen or so, and then shot up. And it's been up, and it goes up and up and up and up. And a lot of that may be technical adjustments, but they capture that each and every year. Again, yesterday, they adopted the budget at thirty-two point three, thirty-two point seven six two. Ours, on the other hand, I think if you see the big spike in the middle, Lindsey, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that's related to the idea of a jail expansion.
And NCAT, yes.
And NCAT. So we increased our property taxes for a couple of years there in the middle, and then it settled down to twenty-nine point three five nine back in 2011, which is why we passed a resolution saying we would like to target twenty-nine point three five nine, and notice every year since then, it's kind of been pretty flat. Going back in history, it was actually higher than that back in nineteen ninety-seven. It dropped down for a few years, but we've settled out, we've settled out pretty well altogether. If we reduce this by half a mill this year, or whatever we can reduce it by, it will be notable, okay? I think that's a great goal, and I would certainly support lowering the mill levy by this motion we're looking at today. I would personally like to see us do a half a mill. I think that challenges us, but I think we need to be challenged. I think we'll find a way. And so, again, the idea that you, we live under, you know, the budget process is this, typically we look at last year's mill levy, we look at the jurisdictional assessed value determined by the appraiser, and those two figures together calculates, if you will, a budget for us to live under. It's kind of arbitrary. It is theoretically ties us to the economy, because housing values kind of go up with the economy. The rate of inflation and things like that are similarly trending. Housing values kind of follow those other things in the community. But other than that, it's kind of arbitrary. Had the appraiser said our assessed value growth was eight and a half percent, we would have found a way to make a budget under eight and a half percent. We didn't do that. It's eight point nine eight, I believe is the correct number. So we have, if you will, an increase of about fifteen point one million dollars in property tax funds. I think, again, to trim just a small amount out of it, we trim this by three million dollars, roughly. Still leaves us a pretty good increase. Let me point out that a half a mill would essentially provide about five dollars of property tax relief for a hundred thousand dollar home. So that homeowner is not a lot, but it's something. But I do think it's what we should do. So thank you, Chairman, for a chance to speak.
Okay. And thank you for that chart. That's a nice, a nice chart. I, okay, Commissioner Dennis?
Oh, thank you. Did you have a statement?
Well, I was just, thank you, I will, I was, careful evaluation from my perspective as well, and communications about stuff, and I know that we can, I think we can absorb the point two five pretty easily, and I think the even twenty-nine is a little bit of work we'd have to do, and, but not a whole lot. And so I'm personally kind of leaning towards a flat twenty-nine mills. It's actually easier to, it's easier to communicate as well. I don't know, mostly, most of these mills go into three digits, but there's a few. I'd say Derby's is flat, but other than that. So I'm just leaning towards a flat twenty-nine, and still make us have to do some push-ups to get there. But with that, I will yield to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. And we started talking some time back about mill levy reduction, and I've challenged everyone to reduce it by a quarter of a mill. I think that that, speaking with our finance department, the manager, we can absorb a quarter of a mill. Above that, we're looking at a lot of red in the future, and I am distressed putting red in the future. So I'm going to support a quarter of a mill reduction, and I don't know if it's time for a motion, but I'd like to start with that one. With that, I move that we reduce property tax levy by one million, six hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars to lower the estimated mill levy rate to twenty-nine point one two zero mills.
One second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. I would like to make a substitute motion, that I move that we reduce the property tax levy by two million, three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and ninety-three dollars to lower the estimated mill levy rate to a flat twenty-nine point zero 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 mills.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the, okay, and Commissioner Howell?
Well, I don't like making substitutes to substitutes, so I won't do that. But I'll just speak again. I like the chairman's motion more than Commissioner Dennis's motion. I would be inclined to support that, but I would prefer to see us go on down to the half a mill reduction. Again, you talk about round numbers, that's a nice round number, too. Half a mill, it's easy to say. I know that it'll be a technical adjustment, no matter what we do here. So when you say twenty-nine mills, it's going to be probably twenty-nine point zero something or other, when we get all said and done. It won't be flat, it'll be a different number. If you like round numbers, I'd like to see us do a half a mill. And again, that challenges us a little bit. By the way, as we go to Topeka, and we argue about Senate bill, Senate concurrent resolution sixteen eleven, this is ammunition that we need to make our strongest argument, is that we are challenging ourselves to find ways to keep this budget as trim as we possibly can. Will it be easy? No. We have to find a six hundred thousand dollar reduction in spending. Bear in mind, we have a counting sales tax of over two hundred million dollars being spent from property tax and sales tax. Again, much of that's discretionary. We have to find a six hundred thousand dollar haircut somewhere among that money. I think we can do it. So if I, I'm not going to make a substitute, if someone else feels like that's a great idea, I would love to see the, one of those motions withdrawn, and let's do a half mill. Otherwise, I might just vote no. Thank you.
Okay, I think Commissioner Lopez was next.
Thank you. So yesterday, we discussed what this could look like, and I agree with Commissioner Dennis, when our finance team is telling us this is what we can absorb in one-time cost, otherwise we're going to be looking at reoccurring costs, we're going to have to figure out where we're cutting from. One thing that we talked about in my advisory board was, how did the county get to where we're at today? And when that comes to how we're paying people under market and all these other issues. And I think for a very long time, we tried to just cut and cut and cut and cut to say we're cutting. It took a long time to get to the issues we're seeing with pay, and it's not going to take, as we've discussed, it's going to take longer than a year to fix that. My concern is, we're finally getting to the point where we are paying people more appropriately. We still have work to do on that. So going in and saying now we need to cut again, which I'm okay with the two point five, I think that that's responsible, it's reasonable. But beyond that, I worry that now we're making this progress, are we going to see detrimental impacts from cutting too much too quickly? This is something that we can start this year, and again, can work on every year. So if we want to look at an additional cut next year, then we can have that conversation. But I think if we're going to be responsible with what we're doing, swaying too far too quickly isn't the way to do it. I don't want to say to our staff, who we've already declined eighteen million dollars in asks, that we now are going to say, not only you're not going to get that, but we're cutting so much that we're going to ask you to start cutting in your department. And I don't think that's fair. I do agree, as we all have heard today, we have families who are suffering because of increased taxes. And I mean, I think all of us are feeling that. I know my family is feeling that as well. When we look at, how can we be as responsible with tax money as possible? I feel like the county has done a really good job so far at doing that. As we've been talking about, it's going to take cities and schools and everybody else to do the same as what we're doing, and having these conversations on mill levy reduction. I'm really proud Hayesville is cutting theirs, the school district is as well in Hayesville, and so I'm really happy and thankful that other taxing entities are looking at this. But I am concerned that if we go too far too quick, what message that sends to our staff? And I think that has been all of our number one priorities for years. It seems like we have talked over and over and over about how staffing stability is so important. I mean, we've seen what happens when we don't have that with EMS and with other organizations. We've seen that we had to close a part of juvenile corrections, because we didn't have the staff for it. So if we are going to talk about cutting this, and I think that's an appropriate conversation to have, I just don't want to go too far where now we're looking at, are we going to put ourselves back in a position that we have worked so hard for so many years now to get out of? So those are my comments, and I agree with the point two five. I think it's a great way to start, and I think next year we can look at, can we go to maybe just the flat twenty-nine at that point? I don't know if we can, but if you look at those outer years, like as you discussed before, it's kind of scary to look at if we don't have the money in the budget for it. So that's where I'm at today. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Beatty?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Commissioner Lopez, for those thoughts as well. I would agree that when we start looking at, because I think we have consent up here, that there's going to be a reduction in this mill levy. It's just, where do we find that balance? I think we're also going to find agreement that staffing stability was priority number one here, and I think you're going to see a budget that reflects that. And when we look at the difference between recommended budget to a half a mill, or point three seven mills reduction, or point two five, we're talking five to eight dollars per taxpayer on a median household income. I get that. And I also get, the staff has told us this year that you need to prioritize us and value us, and I think you're going to see that here. But I answer to the citizens in my district, and I answer to the broader citizens of Sedgwick County. And over and over and over again, they're telling us that they need us to do our part in the twenty to twenty-five percent that we steward over. Twice, we heard two public speakers say death by a thousand cuts. In my district alone, we see Wichita is going to grab every penny of their assessed value growth, and they're going to, we're trying to do some things in property tax relief in those areas, but they're going to grab every penny of assessed value growth. Park City just did a one cent sales tax. Valley Center has a big school bond that's coming, a seventy-two million dollar school bond. Kechai is talking about an eleven or twelve mil property tax increase. This is significant for my district. It's significant. And the only way we're working out of this problem long-term, we're providing relief to our citizens, is it's, we're going to have to be good stewards of what we manage. We're going to have to reform things at Sedgwick County government. There's not much left to cut here. There is not. But there are significant opportunities for reform, and that's where our heads need to turn as we move forward, is to how do we do those things to perform better, more efficient, more collaborative, more functional services at Sedgwick County government? So I have some specific questions about how we accomplish this. If we do a quarter mill, are we cutting anything, or is this just reduction to fund balance?
It's an intentional use of fund balance for one-time projects.
If we move to point three seven mills of a reduction of the mill levy, or build a budget that will accomplish that, is the better phrase, is that still, with your estimation, is that still just fund balance, that we're just reducing fund balance?
It would be fund balance this year, but if you look at the outer years and that forecast that we looked at yesterday, there are enough, there's enough deficit spending in each year that one-time projects aren't going to cut it. So while you can handle that this year, there will need to be a discussion of reductions in something next year.
So we're making some assumptions based on four percent growth?
Four and a half percent.
Four and a half percent growth. So I'm willing to bet on this economy and the people in this community, that we're going to have to grow ourselves out of these, we can't keep taxing people, that's not how we, but we don't make tennis shoes and t-shirts in the back room over here to pay for these things. We are taxing individuals to pay for these much-needed services, and the best way out of this is we're going to have to grow ourselves out of this. There's not much left to cut, and we're going to have to grow ourselves out of this. And I think our community is going to rise to the occasion to do the things that we need to do in this community. So I'm going to, I'm going to continue to advocate for a reduction, a reduction down to twenty-nine mills, which will be two million, three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and ninety-three dollars lower. And again, we're going to do that out of some fund balance, but I have two questions specifically about some of the things that Commissioner Howell had talked about that might help us here. The Economic Development Fund moving it from approximately one point nine million to one point five, are we, what, what impact does that have on us today? Are we building a budget based on the commitments that are already under that category? Are we building a budget based on one point nine million dollars of allowance?
In all honesty, it has been based on the fact that we've had a flat budget since 2012. So really, what you're seeing there is what's been in the budget since 2012. We forecast to spend what commitments this commission has already made. So any reductions in budget authority beyond those commitments that have already been made is not going to help you with your financial forecast. So it's something to be discussed, certainly, if you want to, but it's not something that will help you with solving this issue.
Okay. Commissioner, I think it's just been a historical.
Sure.
I'm not sure that there's, some years, there's been, as you saw, the spike, when a big, big opportunity, I would call it opportunity instead of a challenge, comes up, then
Right.
that commission had to make that decision at that time. So it's just been kind of historical.
I agree, and I think there's a lot of things we do here that are, I would consider economic development that we don't consider as government economic development, but those are other conversations. This Northwest Expressway conversation, now this impacts part of my district, so I need to better understand this thing. I've been hearing about this project for most of my life. This project would spur economic development in western Sedgwick County, and it would be a catalyst. Economic development follows transportation. It'd be a massive boom to what we do out there. But we have to ask, is this boom, and I know Commissioner Dennis has been involved in this very heavily, what are we aiming at here? And we're talking about a million dollars when our constituents are saying, we need help, we need help, we need relief. What are we aiming at? What's at stake if we do what Commissioner Howell has asked to do? Is there something we can meet in the middle? Like, I need to know what we're aiming at, to know that if this is a responsible designation for this budget cycle or not.
Well, I'm going to call Lynn Packer to the podium to speak to your first part of your question, but in terms of fiscal impact, it has none. This is part of the half of the sales tax that is dedicated to road and bridge. So if we cut that out, obviously it frees up money for other projects, or to be reallocated to something else, but in terms of helping solve this general fund deficit, it would not have a role in that. But Lynn, I'll turn it over to you, please.
Hi, Lynn. Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Lynn Packer, Director of Public Works and County Engineer. The Northwest Expressway is a project that has been on the books since 2006. It is a, right now, it is right-of-way acquisition only, and KDOT has preliminary plans completed, but does not have funding for construction or final plans at this time. The funding for the Northwest Expressway has been through local sales tax, and it is a, right now, we are in the middle of an agreement with KDOT to do a dollar-for-dollar match up to one million dollars.
So Lynn, and City of Wichita, are they participating in this also?
The City of Wichita participated between the years of 2006 and I believe 2010, and since then has not participated.
Not participated. What, in your estimation, your professional estimation, what needs to happen to make this project a reality? Is us throwing a million dollars at it? I mean, I know we're acquiring right now right-of-way. What needs to happen to make this a reality?
In order for us to move forward, City of Wichita needs to get back on board. That's going to, that's going to be the catalyst that's going to get KDOT to then look at putting this into the pipeline for construction and moving forward with final design. That's the piece I think that is missing overall.
So in your estimation, Lindsey, do we need to pause what we're doing here, or is it going to have any budget impact until we can get the Calvary back on board, or what?
I would just note that we have an agreement right now that we started in 2001 that goes to 2025 through 2025, that basically says that we can participate with KDOT up to one million dollars, dollar-for-dollar. It goes on to say that we will do everything we can to participate at the one million dollar level. It doesn't say that we have to, but it does note that, you know, if we, obviously, if we will reduce our participation, KDOT reduces its participation.
Would it jeopardize the project? Let me ask you a better question.
If we were, to reduce it or to eliminate?
To reduce it.
To reduce it. I don't think it would, depending on the reduction, if we're talking about a small reduction, I don't think at this time it would have a huge reduction, however.
What about eliminating it? Would it have an impact on this project?
It would. And I would also go on to say that even reducing it would make it that much And I would also go on to say that even reducing it would make it that much harder to get Wichita on board because they're going to show, it's going to show a lack of interest on our part. Reducing it definitely shows a lack of interest and we will not get, make that much harder to get Wichita on board.
That's all my questions. How much is in that fund already for buying a right-of-way? Do you know offhand?
Total about, I estimate about $19.5 million, of which about $15.1 million to date have been spent.
Okay. So we don't spend this, it jeopardizes the project. We don't, we take this out, it doesn't have any budget adjustment at all. Okay.
And it used to be 500,000?
It started out with $325,000 from the City of Wichita and ourselves with the difference being made up by the city of Gaze, of Mays and Goddard, which I believe went up to $500,000. And then in 2021 is when we jumped up to the 1 million.
So the 500 went to a million just recently, in the last few years, just for your background. Okay. And Commissioner Dennis has got, he knows this project.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. First of all, I want to reiterate that if you cut anything out of this, it's not going to affect our overall budget. This is road and bridge money that we'll spend for road and bridges. It comes out of the one cent sales tax. And if you take a look, we've got Goddard and Mays on board. They actually contribute to this each year. We don't have Wichita on board. But when Julia Lorenz was the Director of Transportation, we had her on board. That's why that we're getting a match of $1 million. Any cut, remember, any cut we make is doubled because as soon as we cut a cent, they cut the same amount because they match us dollar-for-dollar. So we've got KDOT on our side. We're going to have a local consult meeting coming up here in the very near future. This will be discussed at the local consult. Hopefully, we can keep that moving forward. We've got a transportation coalition that was formed as a result of the North Junction because we weren't getting anywhere on the North Junction, and we've formed a transportation coalition. And this is the high priority for the transportation coalition. In addition, I know Commissioner Beatty is going to be new going on WAMPO, but it is in the tip program for WAMPO in the future. So every organization, except for the City of Wichita, and I think that they are blind in the only direction that they can grow, in the future, they're hemmed in every direction they look except looking west and northwest. I mean, that's the only direction they've got. If you look and I need to get you the slideshow that David Spears put together on the north, the east side, that showed the quick progression once that they built K-96 around on the east side, there was nothing out there but fields. And very, very rapidly, what you ended up with are huge interchanges, and every interchange is a huge commercial location. Everything in between those commercial locations is churches, schools, homes. And that's been a huge economic boon. So do I agree that we need to get Wichita on our side? I've said enough bad things about Wichita today. I'm not going to keep doing that. But yes, they need to participate because that is an economic driver for their future. So again, it does not affect our budget. It affects what our CIP dollars go towards in the future. Every dollar that we cut is actually doubled because we lose the other half of what we're going to get out of the city, out of KDOT. So yeah, I'm a big advocate for it. I've been a big advocate all along. I guarantee you, if you go up and talk to Mays in your district, you're going to find that they believe that that's going to drive it. And as a matter of fact, if you look at the plan, the first place that they're going to start working is in Mays. And they're going to do this in phases. So any cut there, I think, is foolhardy. Thank you.
Appreciate the insight.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you. Just a couple of follow-up questions on the topic. So what's the total cost of the project?
We do not have a total updated cost from KDOT. However, back several years ago, when this was undertaken, it was about a $500 million project. I know it's more than that now.
Can we just guess, maybe 700 million at this point?
I...
Just thought of a number because I had to speculate at this point.
Yeah, it would be a speculation. KDOT has the construction numbers.
We know it's more than half a billion, though.
Yes.
Okay. And out of that $19.5 million, how much of that came from Sedgwick County taxpayers? We know City provided a little bit of money at the beginning for a few years.
Yes.
And some of it came from the state. It looks to me like since 2001, they probably have provided $3 million. So out of that 19.5, the vast majority of that came from the Sedgwick County taxpayers?
City of Goddard and the City of Mays have also contributed with that. And KDOT has matched with us dollar-for-dollar through the inception in 2006.
So if we didn't use our sales tax dollars to do this, would we not spend them someplace else important in Public Works? Or let me ask the question another way. Do we have property tax dollars that are not part of sales tax dollars going into Public Works paying for some stuff?
No.
We don't? Well, okay, we do borrow about $4 million a year. It is paid back with bond and interest debts paid for by property taxes, is it not?
It is, but we are allowed to basically take 1.6 million of that half of the sales tax funds and we use that to pay off the debt service. So it really is, even the bonded interest portion is paid for by the sales and use tax portion.
I guess I'd just say, by not spending money here, I think it's, I understand the argument. I don't think it's likely we'd say, we're not going to find a way to spend that money someplace else that's really important to taxpayers. So again, the idea of we spend the money here means it can't be used someplace else. Money is fungible to a degree. Again, this may be sales tax dollars, but it does affect the budget someplace else. And ultimately, yeah, I can't connect the dots right now, but I have a feeling that this will, again, provide revenue for other things that otherwise may be a property tax impact in one way or the other. I have not connected those dots because I didn't know that until just now. So at the rate we're saving right now, if this is just for fun, is $700 million and we've got $20 million in there right now, when do we, do we have an argument to be made that this is a viable project that we think we'll see in the next 20 years?
Again, I'll just go back. It's going to come down to KDOT being willing to take this project and put it into the construction pipeline. We will know more information after the local consult coming up this fall about it happening anytime, you know, recently. But I do know Secretary Reed has noted that really they're looking for, without directly saying it, pointing to Wichita's participation, they're really looking for that to come back in before they go to the next step. Now, at what point they'll do that, that's a KDOT statement.
I'll say this, for, you know, Wichita certainly has benefited from the Northeast Expressway, no question. Everybody knows that. And I don't know sure the Northwest Expressway would be like that or not. We don't know. But that, again, would be speculation, but certainly Wichita has benefited from the one we have in history. We can see that that certainly has benefited Wichita. I think if Wichita would get on board, I might be more willing to support this. But right now, you're asking people, you're asking for people on the corner of the county, you know, in Mulvane essentially, to support a project on the other side of the county, which I don't think I will ever see or my grandkids will ever see. That's how far away this is. I think the money could be better used, again, I have another motion in just a minute to peel off a portion of this money for the Arc 95 project, which I think is much more viable because of the cost. And so I think that may be another way to use that very same money for something that actually could be done in hopefully my lifetime. So that's another motion in just a minute, but that's enough for that discussion on Northwest Expressway.
All right. Now, let's go back to the motion and the substitute motion. So as of now, there's a substitute motion with a second on the lowering the mill levy rate to 29.000. And there was a second. Is there any other comment or questions? Commissioner Dennis?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. We're getting ready to vote to put it at 29 mils even is what the motion is currently. And I can't vote for that because I don't want to go a step too far at this point. Again, we can adjust it again next year when we know exactly what the impact is going to be. But to gamble on saying, yes, the economy is going to grow and we're going to bank on that, again, that's not, I'm fairly conservative. I'm not going to jump out there and say, yeah, we can do it all at once. So at this point, I'd already made a motion that is overcome by the substitute motion, but I can't support the substitute motion because it does put us in the red in the future. And I'm not going to bank on hoping that the economy goes the direction we're going. We've seen what's happened to the economy. There's downturns in the economy all the time. And if we have a downturn, then we're going to be suffering the consequences. Thank you.
Okay. And Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. I do agree that going to 29 flat worries me. I mean, I, like I stated before, am concerned that a lot of work that we've already done could be impacted going forward. That being said, I also don't want us to not do something to help our residents who are in need. I don't want to hurt our neighbors by not adjusting this either. So it is, it's a really hard place to be because there are so many conflicting things that we have to take into account here. I will vote for the 29 flat, but I want to be very clear that I am concerned with what this does. I think we have a couple of years now that we can really adjust and try to figure it out, but if this starts to impact compensation or our stability of our workforce or anything along those lines, I'm going to be very vocal on this vote here being a contributing factor to that. So while I will vote for it today to help our neighbors, I want to make sure that I'm very clear with my concerns going forward. Thank you.
Okay. And Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Commissioner. Just a couple of quick questions. What's our ending balance now? What's our lowest ending balance projection, I should say, over the next year?
Under which scenario, sir?
Under, well, again, let's talk about if we lower this by a half a mil, what's our lowest ending balance number for the following year?
That would bring us down to 88 million across all five county property tax departments.
And I'd rather not use ending balance to do this, but let's just say if we absolutely had to, we do have an option there.
We do.
In fact, in this budget, there's including, I think, $34 million in contingency funds.
There is. I do think, though, it's worth reminding Commissioners that this year and last year with assessed value growth has absolutely been the anomaly.
I understand.
We have had an average of 4% growth historically the last few years. In 2020, it was 1.4; in 2021, it was 4.6; in 2022, it was 3.6. So really, with the 4.5, that's, I mean, that's not, that's hopeful, in my opinion. So I just, while we're talking about growing our way out of it and some of those other things, I want to make sure that Commissioners are aware, not just downturns, but just even average growth. And we did hear from the appraiser at staff meeting yesterday that sales are down. I see that in the monthly reports from the mortgage registration fee information in the Register of Deeds office. So while we're cautiously optimistic, even folks will tell you, we're not outside the risk of having a recession, right? We're not, the feds are still probably going to increase rates because they're trying to drive inflation down to 2%. And there's a fear that we're not going to have a soft landing, right? That we're going to have something worse. So when we say gamble, as your CFO, I just want to make sure that I comment on that and give you some cautionary tales. So you are the board, you are the policymakers, I will do whatever you tell me, but I just want to make sure that all of that information is out there for your consideration.
So to respond to that, so the appraiser also wasn't willing to speculate based on, you know, he doesn't want to do that. If he said it was probably, would be wrong for him to do so. We're two-thirds away through 2023, and I've not seen housing prices drop.
Housing prices have not, but the volume has.
That's the problem. So the reason sales have gone down is because there's a supply problem.
Right.
Right? Housing prices are climbing still, still. And that's the reason the feds have raised the rates to the way they have is because they're trying to get this to slow down a little bit. Inflation's still happening. And so you're talking about staving off a recession, one way to do that is to lower the tax burden a little bit. And again, so let's talk about the net effect of this. So right now, what's the base budget as it came to us includes, on a $100,000 home, an increase in tax revenue to Sedgwick County of $27.04. If we lower this by, we lower this by one mil, that's a .85% reduction in their tax burden. It's a $2.88 tax cut. But in doing that, we're still raising additional $24.16 above what we did last year. That's a quarter, that's a quarter mil. Go down to 29, flat, that's a 1.2% reduction in their tax levy based on what was proposed in the base budget today. That's $4.25 tax cut. But we're still going to raise an additional $22.79 tax increase on a $100,000 home. That's a 29 flat. And then the final one, if we go down to half mil, we're going to see 1.7% reduction in the tax levy from Sedgwick County, which is a $5.75 tax cut on a $100,000 home. But we're still going to see tax increase of $21.29. Again, as I said a minute ago, and I don't want to repeat myself, but I think to fight a $600,000 haircut in this budget is not a hard thing to do. We can find a way to do that. I think, again, challenging government to be fiscally conservative, again, had the appraiser come back with a smaller number, we would have found a way to make the budget work. So I still think the half mil is the way to go. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments before, okay, I don't see any, so the motion doesn't need to be repeated. We have it. Okay. All right. So Madam Clerk, please call the rule.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
No.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
No.
Chairman Meister?
Aye. Okay, we've established the mill levy going forward. Thanks for the discussion, everybody. Okay. Now we are into any, any changes to the recommended budget that, any changes we would have to vote on before moving to finalize, to vote to finalize the budget. So we did have a discussion about, there was one motion that didn't get a second that had a series of items. Is there any, okay, Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. First of all, I am very grateful for that reduction. I didn't vote for it. I think it's a step in the right direction. So appreciate the discussion, and I think that will be well-received by our community that we did something today. So appreciate that. I'm sorry I couldn't vote for it, but I just, I think I've made my case. Anyway, I have another tweak in the budget. This, again, goes back to that election mail ballot application. This, again, would transfer the money a little bit in the election office, and it was set at 15 poll sites. So the motion would read, I move that we restore $120,386 in budget authority, $77,914 in elections office, and $42,472 in the central services budget, and transfer $4,340 from the operating reserve to the election office budget to fund the mailing, I take that back, this is, to fund the mailing of the election site postcard. Is this the postcard or is this the application?
This is the postcard only. What I think you would want to preface your motion with is removing the funding for the advance by mail flyer.
That's right.
And then doing this after that.
Okay. So again, I have to go to the other sheet to get those numbers. You know, what I'm trying to do is I want to remove, yeah, okay, thank you. Okay, so what this would do, it removes, remove 72, am I saying this right? Remove $72,250 from the election office budget and $48,136 from the central services budget tied to the advance voting by mail or flight, voting by mail ballot application. Then I would continue on with this budget. Okay, this motion here. Further, I would move that we restore $120,386 in budget authority, $77,914 in the election office, and $42,472 in the central services budget, and transfer $4,340 from the operating reserve to the election office budget to fund the mailing of the election site postcard, not the application, and the addition of 15 additional poll sites.
So you're shifting some funds around. Do you understand what the motion is?
Yes. So basically, what he's proposing is the budget authority that's currently in the recommended budget.
The clerk doesn't understand the motion.
I will get it to you. Okay. Do you want me to restate the motion? Would that be helpful?
Does the election commissioner want to weigh in? Are you, okay, all right, so let's go.
Okay. So basically, in summary, what would happen is what's included in the recommended budget, there's about $72,250 that's in elections, and there's $48,136 in central services. budget, there's about 72,250 that's in elections, and there's 48,136 in central services. We would take that out because that was the funding.
That was for the mailing of the.
Right, the application. Right. So we would take that out completely. And then his, the second part of that motion would restore most of that budget authority, but it would, it would reallocate its purpose toward the postcard as opposed to the application. And then we would need to move a little bit of extra budget authority to accommodate the additional 15 polling sites that would be added in. So that's what the, the motion is intended to do.
Okay. I will, I will second that. Election Commissioner, you can't, I can't do sign language. Why don't you come up here?
Come to the podium.
Is the commission clear on the, on the motion? Okay, we, we're going to need, we're going to need to rehash that before it's a second. Right, as of now.
Okay, well, let me rehash it then, if you're not clear. Yes. It gives you the postcard and 30 polling sites. So, so right now, it's in the rec, yes, so you might hang tight. So what the recommended budget does today, if you remember, is we added the three positions, and then we also added funding for a, an advanced by mail application plus 15 no polling sites. That's what the current recommended budget would do. Basically, what this would do is wipe that out and then start kind of from scratch with the, the mailer. And instead, it would put money in for a postcard and 30 posting, or 30 sites. So note card and 30 sites versus application and 15 sites. And I will get the clerk's office a beautiful motion. Thank you.
Okay, that, that clarifies for me.
It does.
You understand, and you guys understand?
But yes, you probably want to weigh in on whether you like that.
Election Commissioner, there was a question for you, I think.
Good afternoon now, Chairman and Commissioners, Laura Rainwater with the election office. I am good, we do need 30 polling sites. I totally agree with you, Commissioner Howell. So that is a very good tradeoff with the mailer, not the application, but the mailer will provide all the ways you can vote, all your early voting sites. It will provide a QR code with a link to the application if you want an advanced by mail application, and then the addition of 30 polling sites next year, which is a big, big chunk.
So the postcard, the postcard, Laura, the postcard also will be really an, an information postcard about dates and, you know, the.
And locations, times that the.
Early voting opens, locations, times, their polling place. And so it's a, it's an, including in that is an ability to request a.
In this last election, I mean, I'm all for advanced by mail ballot applications. I don't want to come across that I'm not. But this last election, we saw other entities, candidates, PACs, whatever, sending out advanced by mail ballot applications on our behalf. I mean, so we did receive those from other parties. So, I mean, yeah, it's happening.
All right. Commissioner Dennis?
Well, thank you, Commissioner Rainwater. I appreciate it because I did not want to vote for something that might be adverse to your office. I just want to remind everyone that this last vote that we just did the canvas on, really there were a lot of advanced ballots that came in, an awful lot considering the size of the election. And there is nothing that says that with all the hundreds of mailers that I got, that somebody couldn't have part of their mailer, an advanced mail ballot as included in it. Is there, that's totally legal by the law.
That is legal. You just can't endorse a candidate. If, if a PAC has been.
No, what I'm saying is that a candidate can send out an advanced mail ballot as part of their, an application as part of their mailer.
I'll have to check the law on that. I think it has to be nonpartisan, where you're not endorsing a candidate, you're encouraging people to vote, but I can double check the statute on that for you.
Okay, well, I'd be interested in that because really the advanced ballots in this last election made a lot of difference in the outcome of the election. So if it's legal for a candidate to say, hey, here's my ballot, send, or here's my mailer.
Application, yeah.
Please send in an advanced ballot, I don't care who you vote for. Hopefully, that'd be something that would be legal. But anyway, I can support this. I appreciate it, and I'll support the motion. Thank you.
Okay. And Commissioner Howell?
Yeah, so I wouldn't term this as a cut to your office. This is a reallocation of funds, which I, I love the idea of having more poll sites.
I do, too.
I've been wanting this for so long. I think we need to actually, again, doing 30 this year, I hope we do more next year. We need to get back to a good number.
I agree.
I would make only one other comment. Again, I, I implore, from a taxpayer perspective, I think a black and white postcard serves the purpose. I don't think we have to do color just to save some money. And it's one per household. They should share amongst the voters of the household.
It is one per household.
Yeah, right. We see the application was one per voter.
Yeah.
If you have five voters in your house, you have five applications. This is one per household. So again, save some money. It doesn't have to be inside of an envelope necessarily. It's, it's apparently, it's a very simple printing, mail it out. It's information, education about the election. People will certainly benefit from this, and I think people will really appreciate saving some taxpayer money. And then for some people who want to vote by, by mail, they can still do it.
Absolutely.
And we're not really telling someone that that's, you know, I'll just say this, my personal opinion is, poll sites are more secure, and when you walk out, you cash your ballot, you know your vote counted. If you mail it in, you're kind of subject to lots of things that might go wrong. We know that from canvassing, we've seen that before. Again, your office staff does a great job, that's not the problem. It's just that people sometimes don't read the instructions well or something. So with that, this is a really good change, and I, and I appreciate the fact that you're supportive of that. Thank you, Commissioner Rainwater.
Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. I, I'm very happy about the additional polling sites. I think that's fantastic. It's been needed. And I want to lean into what you're saying as, since you are running the elections. I would just say that we have set a precedence in the past of sending the ballots out, especially on presidential years. So while I am agreeing, agree with some of this, I don't agree with not sending the applications out, which I get is probably not going to be the majority up here. But I wanted to state publicly that I do agree that we need to send those out. I think it makes it easier for people to vote. I don't think everybody has the opportunity to go in person. And so I just think that it's appropriate to send them out, especially because that's the precedence that we had set in the past, especially for presidential elections. So I just want you to know where I'm coming from as I vote on this motion.
I totally agree with you that it is not a necessity, but it provides better access for everybody, but it's a very costly endeavor. And with budget cuts that everybody's talking about, I totally understand why you're trying to make best use of taxpayer money. But absolutely, I support advanced by mail applications and advanced by mail ballots. It's secure. We do incredible signature verifications that go through every, you know, every ballot that we receive by the mail. It is going to create some more, a lot of phone calls. Our phone system gets overloaded when we do the mailer, the information mailer as opposed to an application. It does overwhelm my staff, but we'll deal with it. You know, we'll deal with it.
And I think you hit on a good point when we talk about how, how we look at budget cuts. My concern is, this is our most basic right as citizens, is to be able to vote. And so when we talk about budget cuts, I have concerns about cutting in elections.
I mean. Thank you.
You need more positions. You need these things to be able to run your elections efficiently and safely, and I want to make sure that you have that. So I was not looking at cutting budget or reallocating budget when it comes to elections just because that is, as I said, it's our most basic right.
Right. The goal of the 30 versus the 15 polling sites, at first when we were talking about it, was we would add 15 and do the advanced by mail ballot application as opposed to doing 30 and just a mailer. We need 30 polling, we need to take some of these massive polling sites that have over 7,000 registered voters. The lines are long. The good news is, we've already got 12 new polling sites for next year. So, you know, we've been hard at work these last few months recruiting some more polling sites, and I just got wind of another one for Valley Center. The superintendent okayed the high school, so we will split the Valley Center. It has over 6,000 registered voters. So we're working on it. So it's, I appreciate your support.
Okay, so there was a motion by Commissioner Howell, and I will second it for the record. And any other comments? Thanks, Laura, for being available. And Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
No.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Chairman Meister?
Aye.
Okay, Commissioner Howell informs me, he has one more.
I'll try to end this. I know it's getting late in the day, I'm sorry. But this goes back to the Northwest Expressway just for a moment here. Rather than, again, to the extent that other commissioners support that, as, as we've described already, I would like to see District Five, as my district, move their portion, move the portion that would come from taxpayers of District Five. So I'll say one-fifth of that money, I'd like to see it go towards a project that helps District Five. Normally, I think about doing things, you know, services for countywide, but again, I think that the Northwest Expressway is, is so far away, I don't see there's a lot of benefit in supporting that. I would rather see the money used for something which I think is much more viable, and that's the Arc 95 project. So I make a motion that we transfer $200,000 from Project R328, known as the Northwest Expressway, to a new project and fund center to be used for the Arc 95 project.
Okay. Commissioner Beatty?
Yeah, sorry, just some questions. I don't know enough about Arc 95 that.
I would agree with you, Mr. Beatty, and I don't even know.
Is there a fund set up?
I don't know how far along it is.
We'll create a fund.
Oh wait, this would create a fund to start with?
A new project and fund center.
Arc 95 is a project that does still have an active fund center. We do not have a fund center set up for construction. The fund center that was set up was to study the viability of the Arc 95. Arc 95 is a project that would take, actually create a new road and bridge across K-15, BNSF Railroad, and the river on 95th Street. Basically, take it from Woodlawn and get us all the way over to the area around Broadway. And currently, that's floodway. We have the K-15. We, right now, we only have, we don't have a crossing down in that area. We've only got two crossings in, that cross from east to west. And that's, it was deemed to be something that would be advantageous for the area.
Is this a Star Wars kind of thing, or is this thing practical? I mean, Northwest Expressway, we talk a lot about, you know, foreseeable, it's not in the foreseeable future, but this is somewhere aiming towards. Is this something that's practical?
It is.
Short term? I mean, this is a Class A city down in Derby, so.
It is. It's, it's going to be, I believe both Northwest Expressway and Arc 95 are viable projects. They are both extremely expensive. Like Northwest Expressway, it is going to take us, we're going to need federal funds, we're going to need regional funds, WAMPO, to be able to do this. It's not something we, as the county, are going to be able to take by ourselves.
Okay. Commissioner Lo, or Commissioner Dennis, I think you were next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. And it sounds like we're now being parochial about what our districts are rather than what's good for the entire county. I have supported Arc 95 every step of the way. With WAMPO, I was chairman of WAMPO, vice chair for two years, chairman for two years. I'm on the executive committee today, and we support Arc 95. If you look at the Transportation Coalition, we've got it as one of the priorities on the Transportation Coalition. When we go to the local consult coming up, it's going to be one of the things that we're pushing forward. But right now, there's not a project for, to put money into for Arc 95 until KDOT comes up with a project or something that we can start partnering for. Now is not the time to start putting money into that. And the amount of money we could get out of WAMPO wouldn't even come close to, to putting crosswalks down Arc 95 currently. So I appreciate that. I, I support everybody's district. When Commissioner Howell was interested in a bridge that was being worked and it was going to cost us a lot of money in order to put stoplights on that, we voted to do that because it was the right thing to do for that district. So to, for one commissioner to decide something that's more important in his district than it is in Commissioner Beatty's or Commissioner Meister's, Commissioner Lopez's or my district, just so that he can support his district, I think is wrong. Thank you.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yeah, well, my question was going to be around WAMPO. I mean, that's really the driver of what we do when it comes to these projects. So I'm a huge proponent of Arc 95. I think it's desperately needed on the south side. But I also want to make sure that we're being as responsible as we can with the money that we have. And if this isn't quite ready to go yet, then I think we continue what we need to do more to push on other entities or work with WAMPO and see if we can get that moved up a little bit more and before we start a new fund to put money into. I am curious, what Hayesville and Derby and other cities, are they putting money into it yet? I mean, what is that? I, I think they are, but I'm not sure what the, how much that is, or how much is available, or where we're at with that.
That's actually a really good question. Right now, we have Hayesville, Derby, Mulvane are all, and I believe those are the only thing right now, they are all earmarking funds and have been for a couple of years now, earmarking funds for the design and right of way that would be necessary for Arc 95. And, and I do believe this is, like you, this is a good project. One, if I may be so bold, one suggestion I may have is that we take the time to move forward with, working with those, those municipalities to go further than earmark, and let's go ahead and create a fund that everyone can participate in, like we've done with the Northwest Expressway, and to go ahead and start that. That wouldn't be something we would be set up for 2024, but that would be for moving on forward beyond that and get us to the point where we can start doing, having the fund available so that we can do protective overlay like we've done with the Northwest Expressway. The Northwest Expressway is further along. Plans have been already at preliminary stage. We've gone past right of way. It's ready to go to final design and on into the construction pipeline. We're not there yet with Arc 95, but we can start that process.
Well, I appreciate you saying that because that's really where my mind was going, is how can we start some of these initiatives or help move them along a little bit faster than maybe what they would without starting to put the funding in this year? And then when we look at our budget next year, is that the time that we need to start doing that? You know, I'm not sure, and it might be the right time at that point. I don't think today it is just because, I mean, we've got this brought up last minute, and I, I really am concerned about adding anything additional or changing anything without really looking at all the data that goes, that needs to be in these decision-making processes. So I think we need to look at this going into next year's, for next year's budget. Let's look at that throughout the year and not just, I mean, maybe we have a commissioner who has been looking at it this whole time. I haven't been. And so I'm just concerned until I see all of that before I vote on it. Thank you.
Okay. And so I'll remind the commission that, that there was a motion on the floor that has not had a second yet.
Right.
Okay. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. So a couple of things. I understand that Derby, Mulvane, and Hayesville have been putting money in. Unfortunately, it's not been collected up, and again, there's really not a, a fund, like where the, for example, we're handing our, our revenue over to the state of Kansas, they take our revenue, our, our support, if you will, and they're managing those funds on our behalf, on, on the project's behalf. There's no one really doing that for Arc 95. But there is, there is money set aside in those budgets. They are, they are stock, they are cash, probably not money, each, in each one of their year's budgets, they're doing that. So there is a chunk of money out there. I don't think the county has put any money into this at all, other than the planning up to this point. We, we funded a trans systems, public service, you know, public community event, they got got some drawings, kind of artistic drawings of what this would look like. It's been talked about over the years. This project precedes my time on this commission. In fact, in 2018, there was a move by this commission to eliminate Arc 95. I fought pretty vigorously at that time, and there's nine pages of minutes in that October 10th meeting, if you want to go read it, that actually made an argument, thankfully, there was a transportation col, not transportation, there was a state meeting at WSU Metroplex, where we were able to make a public argument for the project, and it was actually saved, if you will. But there was some discussion at that time whether or not this project should be kept on our table or not. So the end of the day, K-15 and Rock Road are hitting traffic congestion, and they're every day, and there seems to be no simple solution to that problem. Arc 95 is part of the answer. And again, you compare it, and I'll speculate, $700 million for Northwest Expressway, I don't know what Arc 95 is worth now in today's dollars, but it's not anywhere near that. It's a fraction of the cost. And the only place you can cross the river, the trains reliably going into Wichita, is at Waterman, which is a low bridge. You can go other bridges into the city, or Kellogg, but you can't get past those trains, and train traffic continues to increase. And so there's, there's a lot of people who are, are not able to get to work reliably, because they can't get past the trains. It's just a fact. And the solution is, I think, Arc 95 solves that problem. So it creates a connection to the KTA. You can go anywhere you need to go at that point, which of course ties into 135 and 235 around the city. It is a, it is a very important piece of infrastructure to solve congestion problems right now in District Five. So with that being said, I have been advocating for this pretty passionately for a number of years. I need it to move forward. That's why I'm bringing it up today. It's not, again, this shouldn't be a surprise. I've been talking about my, my lack of trust that Northwest Expressway will happen in my lifetime, or my grandkids' lifetime. I think, again, I'll make a strong argument, it's so expensive, and there's such a small amount of money on the table, it doesn't have a lot of traction. But $200,000 in Arc 95, I think, chums those waters. This becomes a viable project. If we start putting that kind of money each and every year, in fact, I would encourage District Two to do the same. We put $400,000 a year into that fund, we'll see this thing happen pretty soon. I think, and again, we're talking about federal infrastructure programs. If we have a shovel-ready project, which is what I think this would do, creates, if you will, moves us towards a shovel-ready project, and we start looking for grant money, again, something that's going to be in the nature of, let's say, $50 million project versus $700 million project, I think we have a much better chance of getting that done. So with that, I think this is a very important, I know we don't have a second, but if there's no second, I guess we'll let it die. Thank you.
Okay. There is a motion on the floor, and is there a second? I'll ask again if there's a second. I don't see one, so the motion dies for lack of a second. Okay, is there any other motions from any commissioners? I don't see any right now, so any other, so you want to wrap this up for us, and tell us how, what the motion will be for budget adoption? I may have it in front of me. Okay.
Didn't Lorian do a good job with all of your coordination and documentation?
Okay.
Desk yesterday.
Can we make a motion to get a pizza?
Yeah.
We just be done and go get food on our own?
A yellow sheet you all have in front of you?
So what you all need to decide now is, there are two separate sets of motions you can do. You can do the first one, which would allow us to have a single resolution that includes both the operating budget and the capital improvement project. Or we have in the past, broken it out into two parts, an operating budget and a capital improvement project. So if someone wants to get a budget adopted, you have either of these options to pick from. Typically, the simplest is this top one.
Okay, so we talked about this before, if we could, a single motion on the budget, and then go to CIP, but unless there's consternation about the CIP budget, I'm supportive of combining them. I'm seeing nods of okay. So I will make the motion, I think it's the middle one here, Lindsey?
If you just want a single motion, it's this top one.
No, we're gonna, oh, and that combines the...
It combines the operating budget and the CIP, sir.
And the CIP, okay. Okay. Okay, everybody, take a deep breath, okay. I move we adopt the resolution for the 2024 Sedgwick County budget. That includes an operating budget of $518,464,784, and the 2024 Capital Improvement Program of $29,574,765. The total operating budget is partially funded with a property tax levy of $1,000, 1,865,873, which is approximately equivalent to 29.000 mils, based on the estimated assessed valuation, subject to review and technical adjustments.
Perfect.
That's the motion. Is there a second? Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I will second this, although I still object to the 29 mils, but it's already passed, so it's beyond, it's water under the bridge. So at this point, I'll second the motion.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. Any other comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
No.
Chairman Meister?
Aye. Well, congratulations, commission, staff. We have a budget, 24. We still have some business to do. It is 1:11, we can plow into this, or we can take another break. Let's plow forward, plow forward. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item J, addition of positions to the staffing tables of Emergency Communications, Regional Forensic Science Center, Emergency Medical Services, Election Commissioner, County Appraiser, and Fleet Management.
Okay. All right.
Hey, Chairman and Commissioners, Tom Stolz, Manager's Office, again. This item was discussed publicly at a staff meeting, was actually brought forth by Commissioner Dennis. Of the positions approved in the budget that you just ratified, Mr. Dennis had discussed putting, pushing forward with those position fills now, instead of waiting till January 1. So that's what this agenda item discusses. I'll turn it back to Commissioner Dennis for his discussion, and wait to see what the commission decides.
Okay. Yes, thank you for clarifying what this item is. Commissioner Dennis?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Tom, and staff for looking at this. One of the questions I had when I brought this up early in this discussion was, how much impact would it have on the 2023 budget? Because that's what we're really talking about, is moving these up just a little bit, so that they're funded for a short period of time out of the 2023 budget. Remember, right now is August, end of August. By the time we get these advertised, and Sheena then starts putting out the word that we need these positions filled, and we get to the point where we start interviewing people, and can do the hires, we're pretty well going to be at the end of 2023. So the impact on the 2023 budget is pretty small, but that's really what this discussion is, is should we start hiring these individuals now, or wait until the 2024 budget is in effect? And if we do that, then we push this whole project back. Well, a lot of departments came through and said they need more FTE, but our staff took a look at that very closely, and said, there are some departments that this is critical to get these positions filled as soon as possible. So if they've advocated for these, the staff says it's a good idea, the manager says it's a good idea, why would we vote until, wait until January, just have the budget approved, and then start through this entire process, when we can allow Sheena and the different departments to start doing it now? And because the cost is pretty small, I don't, it's not going to affect the 2023 budget, I've already cleared this with Lindsey. So I think that this is a great idea, to be able to let these critical positions start being filled as soon as possible. So therefore, I move that we approve the additional nine FTEs, and total is outlined in the body of the agenda item.
Second.
The motion and a second. Any other comments? I think this was a nice move, a positive move for all departments affected. Madam Clerk, no, Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So has staff, did they bring this idea forward? Is this initiated by our concern as a commission?
It was brought up by commission.
By commission. Again, I think these are important positions, but I think this is a precedent that we're going to create here by doing this. We're only, we're at the end of August, we only have four months left in the calendar year. By the time you onboard these people, I don't know if they start planning to onboard people prior to January the 1st, or they start on January the 1st? What's the answer to that question? Do they start on January the 1st?
Before.
So we're talking about, and these numbers here, is this reflective of, like, say, an October placement, or?
November 1 is what the [inaudible].
November 1. So two months of staff for these nine people is $183,000.
Yes. And I think the feeling of staff was with, with the number of openings we have, unused salaries and dollars to pay for that, in $2023.
My concern is precedent here. I think that if we do this this year, I think we're going to start doing this every year.
I understand.
And again, this was, this was not, even though maybe unused salary, it is still almost $200,000, it would, it would be in our ending balance if we went, if we didn't do this today, so...
This has been done before. This has been done before. So it's not, it's not a precedent that's in stone that has to happen.
Lindsey Prosser, your CFO, yes, historically, we, there have been certain positions that have been authorized in the next year's budget. The difference is, we have not typically brought it to the commission to add them permanently. We have done it through a temporary position that HR can create to get us to that end date, but not, probably not for as many of these positions, but more selective positions based on need at that time.
Is the urgency the same for all of these positions?
I think in the discussion that commissioners had, clearly, Emergency Communications, Forensic Science Center, I would say yes, sir, to that question.
All right, well, thank you for the answer to my questions.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Chairman Meister?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item K, consideration of a grant in the amount of $497,108 for Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program fiscal year 2023.
Well, good afternoon, Elizabeth.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. Elizabeth Ewers, Management Intern from the County Manager's Office. I am here today to present to you the 2023 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, also known as JAG. The JAG grant is the primary provider of federal criminal justice funding to states and local governments. So the total funding awarded for 2023 is $497,108. Sedgwick County's share of that is 50%, or $248,554, and the other half goes to the city of Wichita. Sedgwick County's amount is an increase of about $7,000, or 2.9% compared to the funding received in 2022. So currently, the city of Wichita and Sedgwick County are classified as disparate jurisdictions. This means that we receive funding in one lump sum, and then that sum can be divided up through a memorandum of understanding between the city and the county. So today, in addition to staff's recommendation to accept this grant, we also ask that you conduct a public hearing to accept public comments, as required by the grant and the United States Department of Justice. So this slide outlines the requested amounts from the departments, and what the Advisory Board recommends. The Advisory Board includes representatives from each of the departments listed here, as well as Commissioner Sarah Lopez, Mike Elbers, Chief Information Officer, and Rusty Leeds, Assistant County Manager. So the total funding requested for 2023 was $275,339.61. The committee met to discuss these requests, and determined a recommended amount of $248,554, based on the grant allocation. For reference, the request for 2022 totaled $241,554. So the recommended items for 2023 are ranked by priority. The committee worked together to determine which priorities would be funded for each department, and the following information will cover the specific items funded for each department through the grant. So the first department we have is the Sheriff's Office. On this slide and the other slides to follow for each department, you will see numbers in parentheses that represent the number of units requested by the department, followed then by the total cost, and then a purpose for each of the requests. The individual prices for each item are listed in an Excel sheet in your packet. At the bottom of each slide, you'll also see the total requests for each department. So for the Sheriff's Office, there are three prioritized requests this year, two of which are shown here. The first priority request asks for supplies needed to support two new reentry program liaison positions that the Sheriff's Office plans to hire. The second request asks for a video surveillance system for the property and evidence building. And then the third and final request for the Sheriff's Office asks for 15 laptops and Microsoft Office Suite licenses that are needed for a large upcoming recruit class. So this brings the Sheriff's Office requested total to $90,284, or about 36% of the total grant funding received by the county. The next department is the Regional Forensic Science Center. The RFSC has five priority requests in total. This slide shows priority request one and two, which consists of, first, a portable x-ray machine used for autopsies, and second, equipment for increasing cold storage capacity. The priority three request asks for replacement bone saws used during autopsies. The priority four request is for new autopsy work tables that will allow staff to more efficiently and effectively complete autopsies and the associated paperwork. And then the fifth and final request of the RFSC asks for a comparison microscope digital camera system to ease a training and casework bottleneck. The request for all five items from the RFSC totals $44,166, or 18% of the total grant funding received by the county. Our next department is the District Attorney's Office. They have three priority requests for 2023. The first asks for a total of 111 new phones to replace current phones that are not compatible with a new case management system. The second request asks for a new on-base scanner to replace old and dysfunctional scanners used for file management. And then the District Attorney's third and final request is for software used to identify and track individuals using a variety of cryptocurrencies to potentially conceal illegal activities. So these three priority requests from the DA's office total $40,354, or 18% of the grant funding. Our next department is the Department of Corrections. They have two priority requests. The first asks for three Axon body cameras for staff at the juvenile detention facility. The second asks for new e-corrections information management system that will allow staff to track information across systems. These two requests from the Department of Corrections total $55,000, or the total, or 22% of the total grant funds allocated to the county. And then finally, we have the courthouse police with one request for 2023, a recording and camera system for the Sedgwick County parking garage. This request will fund a base camera system that will allow for future additions as needs arise and funding allows. So this request totals $14,750, or about 6% of the total grant funding. So this completes the priority requests for 2023 JAG grant funding. At this time, it is staff's recommendation that you open the public hearing, accept public comments, and then close the public hearing. After the public hearing, it is recommended that you approve the submission of the grant application and authorize the following actions. Acceptance of the grant, if awarded. Authorize the chairman or his designated to sign all necessary documents, including both a grant award agreement containing substantially the same terms and conditions as the application, and a subrecipient agreement to be executed with the city of Wichita. And authorize establishment of budget authority until the conclusion of the grant term, and allowing for remaining balance at the end of each calendar year to be established in the next fiscal year. So with that, I will stand for questions, and each of the five departments has a representative here to answer any specific questions about projects you might have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Elizabeth. That's a very good presentation, very thorough. This is, and if I recall, this is an annual exercise that we do, not really exercise, it's a, it's a good thing for a lot of these departments. So any questions so far before we open the public hearing? I don't see any, so we will now open the public hearing. Does anybody want to address the commission on this grant program? Please state your name and your address, and you'll have five minutes to addresses.
Faith Martin, 608 South Jury. I don't need five minutes. I think this is a great grant. I love, I love how this is being spent. I have one question on the cameras in the parking garage. This is the same question I have any time we buy a surveillance system in Sedgwick County or the city of Wichita. Who is going to have the data? Where is it going to be stored? And will the information be used to surveil the citizens? So if someone is visiting the residents inside the Sedgwick County jail, will their plates be run? Do they have to be worried about being monitored? Is someone going to be questioned if they come in? And, you know, those kind of things. Because there's a lot of people that come visit that may be worried that they're going to have their plates run, or is Flock going to be a part of this, or those kind of things. So I think data privacy is something that we're all concerned about. So I think data privacy is something that we're all concerned about, and if it's just making sure that people are safe inside and then the data's going to be wiped, that's one thing, but I just, there's been a lot of breaches. And making sure our data is private is, I think, something that we can all be concerned about, and I just wanted to bring that up, so. I could stand for questions, but I don't know anything, so.
I think the Chief can address this, or Tom, you have any comments first?
We made the request for cameras in the parking garage because we've had a number of thefts out of vehicles in the parking garage, some of it belonging to employees, some of them belonging to the public. These are routine cameras. They keep images for 30 days, and then they're overwritten by the system. And it's the same basic camera system that is used in the courthouse and all the rest of the county buildings.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying that. Any questions for Chief? I don't see any. Thank you for clarifying. Okay. Any other question, or anybody else on the public hearing would like to address the Commission? Don't see any, so we will close the public hearing and accept the comments. Any other questions or comments? I'll make a motion. It's rather lengthy because we, we accept, make a motion, then we accept the public comments. We've closed the public hearing and approved the submission of the grant application, except you know, the grant, and authorize myself or designee to make all necessary document signatures. Authorize the establishment of budget authority until the conclusion of the grant term, and allowing for remaining balance at the end of each calendar year to be established in the next fiscal year. That's the motion. Motion and a second. Before we roll call, is there a question? Okay. I basically took the motion from the recommended action. Okay. All right, there's motion and a second. No other, no comments. Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Chairman. I just, I don't really have any, anything, no questions. I just wanted to say, since this is a memorial grant, let's just highlight the fact this, this gentleman's named Edward Byrne. He was a police officer, I think, up in New York area, and he was ambushed and killed tragically. He was a, a new officer, I believe. I don't remember the story exactly, but it's very much available on the, on the internet, and every year we see this. I almost always go out there and look it up and refresh my memory on, on his story, but it is a, I feel, I feel wrong to, to receive the grant money as a memorial without reflecting on his life a little bit, so please check out Edward Byrne and his story. Thank you so much, Chairman.
Okay, so motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item L, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, regular meeting on August 17, 2023.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
Yep.
Welcome. Good, I have good morning here, but good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Brett Rosenketter from the Purchasing Department. The regular meeting of boards and, of boards of bids and contracts of August 17, 2023 resulted in one item that we are seeking your approval. The item is the SAP Recruiting and Onboarding for Human Resources and Enterprise Resource Planning. We recommend to accept the quote from HR Focal Point LLC in the amount of $130,158 to be automatically renewed annually unless notice of termination is provided by either party. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Brett, thank you. Is there any, any questions? I don't see any. I make a motion that we approve the board and bids contract as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. No questions. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Thanks again. Next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Good afternoon. Commissioner Tom Stoles, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items M through X, and I want to call out item T, which is an approval of agreement with Unified School District USD 262, which is Valley Center for our Mental Health Intervention Program. A piece of good news I think the public ought to be aware of. I don't want to say it buried on consent.
Thank you for pointing that out. Any questions about the consent items? As presented, I don't see any, so make a motion that we approve consent items M as in Mary through X.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other questions? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Committee Reports.
Yes, Commissioner Dennis?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is late in the day, so I'm going to be short. First thing is, don't forget, Zubilee comes up on September the 9th, Saturday night. The tickets right now until September 1st are $150 apiece. After September 1st, they're $175 apiece, so buy your tickets now and save yourself $25 apiece. The other item, and Commissioner Beatty may have more to add, but I'm going to briefly touch on it, that the Mental Health Substance Abuse Team met a couple times recently to start working on our legislative platform from that organization, and we're well along the way to creating a platform. They want to make sure that it's ready in time so that they can coordinate that with all of the other organizations that are going to have a legislative platform for the, the legislature that goes back in session in, in January. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Anybody else have anything to report on their committees that they're assigned to? I don't see any. Next item, please.
Other.
Under other, Commissioner Howe?
I know it's late in the day, I'll try to be fairly quickly, but I just wanted to share, I did some calculations based on mill levy. I think it's worthy of sharing. According to Wichita's 2024 budget, they anticipate taking in $87 million this year from the 1% countywide sales tax. If you look at their mill levy equivalent, that's equivalent to 18 mils of property tax reduction because of the 1% sales tax. In our own budget, we, we receive about, equivalent to about one mil of reduction because of sales tax that comes into our budget. I'm sorry, did I say that right? Six mils, excuse me. Six mils, I apologize. It's really important to get this right. Six mils to the county, and I say, again, almost, again, all the $40 million, just under $40 million we get, like $39.8 million in sales tax we get, all of it goes to pay for things we would pay for with, with property tax if it wasn't for the sales tax. And same thing with Wichita. And you might say, well, half the money goes to infrastructure, right? But we still have to pay for infrastructure if it wasn't for the sales tax. And so the net effect of that is, if you live, you live in Wichita, you have 18 mil reduction in property tax in Wichita, and a six mil reduction if you live in Sedgwick County. So Wichita would have a 24 mil reduction altogether. And so when the state doesn't provide ad-form tax reduction, I've not done the calculations on Wichita's potential benefit from that being funded, but for us, it's about, it's about 1.1 mil reduction if they were to do this. It's about $7 million is what the state would provide in funding to county, Sedgwick County taxpayers, which is equivalent to about 1.1 mils. And so my argument to the state of Kansas is, if you fund that, we will in fact lower the mill levy. We will. We've already lowered the mill levy by 24 mils between city and county. We have to take care of infrastructure. We have to provide services. If it wasn't for the 1% self-imposed voter-approved sales tax, we would be having a 24 mil increase in, for the average, the average taxpayer in Wichita. And so I just think it's important to note that, and I would encourage the state once again to trust us, to be conservative. I think we've proved that, we've proven that today. And again, they're talking about, they're, they're arguing about 1.1 mil reduction to Sedgwick County. We've already demonstrated 24 mil reduction. Thank you, Chairman.
Second. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Howe. And under other, I just want to thank everybody again for the budget work. That's a process that starts officially in about February of each year with a workshop or a, what do we have? It's called a, not a workshop, but we have a gathering when we first start the budget process. A retreat, that's what we have. So that was in February, and here we are, August 23rd, we hit our goal, and we've got a budget passed, and we've got a mill levy established. And again, just a shout out to the fellow cities of Colwich, Hayesville, Eastborough, Derby, Park City, Bel Air, Cheney, Mulvaney, and Garden Plain for also considering their, their revenue position and was able to lower their mill levies so those, those citizens will have a, have a duplicate reduction between the county and, and their city. So thank you again to them all. Is there any other business needs to come for the Commission? Don't see any. So with that, we are adjourned.